All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, meeting of the Escondido Planning Commission. If you could please stand and join me in the flag salute.
Freddie, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could get the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Chair Wyler.
Here.
Vice Chair Barber.
Here.
Commissioner Correll. Commissioner Jester.
Here.
Commissioners McCarroll.
Here.
Commissioner Stevie.
Here.
And Commissioner Spear.
Here.
Moving on to approval of the minutes. Any comments or changes to the minutes of March 25th, 2025? Okay. Commissioner Spear has some comments.
I appreciate the thoughtful logging of the minutes. I only had one suggestion, and that is the remedy that we discussed in one particular It was a discussion related to current protocol regarding Planning Commission minutes. I thought that the paragraph was fine. I only suggest that we add the remedy at the end. That remedy I envisioned saying something like, "The discussed remedy for communicating timely opinions to the City Council from the Planning Commission was to request staff provide specific statements in the City Council Agenda Packet."
Any discussion on that? We can entertain a motion. We can entertain a motion to approve the minutes with the addition of Commissioner Spear.
I will make the motion to approve the minutes. Do you have a comment?
Yeah. Could you read it back, Barry, one more time, please?
Do you want me to read the minutes as they stand and then the addition?
The addition.
Just the addition. "The discussed remedy for communicating timely opinions from the Planning Commission to the City Council was to request staff provide specific statements in the City Council Agenda Packet."
Thank you. Sounds pretty accurate.
Move approval of the minutes with the additional language as suggested by Commissioners.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Barber, a second by Commissioner Jester. Any further discussion? None? All right, if we can have the vote?
Vote for Chair Wyler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barber.
Yes.
Commissioner McCarroll.
Yes.
Commissioner Jester.
Yes.
Commissioner Spear.
Yes.
And Commissioner Stevie.
Yes.
The vote is six-zero to approve with the modification as requested.
Thank you. Written communications, any written communications?
None at this time, no.
Any oral communications on items that are not on the agenda this evening?
None have been received, no.
Moving on to public hearings. Current business here is an appeal. It is project number C-23-1348. This is for 1004 North Ash Street, and it's a notice and order appeal. And we'll go ahead with staff presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Chair Wyler, my name is Oscar Romero, Principal Planner, and the item before you tonight is the appeal of a notice and order to abate a public nuisance at the subject property 1004 North Ash Street. The applicant is requesting an appeal to overturn the issued notice and order to abate a public nuisance. Staff recommendation, sorry, the applicant is requesting an appeal to overturn the issued notice and order to abate a public nuisance. Staff recommends Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 2025-05, denying the appeal and upholding the issued notice and order.
Mr. Romero, hold on one second, Oscar.
Sure.
I neglected to ask if there were any disclosures before staff began their presentation. So are there any disclosures on this item? Okay.
But I need her up. No, I do not have any disclosures, but I'm going to need your help. I'm not getting the staff report on my screen. Show off.
Okay. Apologies.
No worries.
Go ahead and go forward.
Okay. The building official has deemed the subject property a public nuisance and issued this notice to the appellant via certified mail and adhering to the Escondido Municipal Code. As a result, the applicant has filed an appeal per the Escondido Municipal Code and is the subject before you tonight. Planning Commission has granted the authority to approve or disapprove the building official's decision. The PC decision may be appealed once more to the City Council for final review and determination. The subject property is at the northeast corner of Ash Street and Lincoln Avenue. The parcel is owned R16 and is developed with a single-family residence, a detached garage, and a detached ADU. The surrounding area consists of single-family residential properties to the north, east, and west, and an elementary school across Lincoln Avenue. To add some context to the site, we have a sequential order of permitting at the subject site. In 2018, the detached garage was approved for a conversion to an ADU. In 2022, a building permit was issued for the approval of an 854 square foot ADU and the conversion of the existing ADU to a garage. In 2023, there was a code compliance case opened due to observed violation of construction without permits. Finally, on March 5th, 2025, the city issued a notice and order to abate a public nuisance with the appeal filed shortly thereafter. Here is a sequential order of code compliance issues which have occurred. On December 14th, 2023, a notice violation was issued and granted the applicant a year to obtain permits for the unpermitted structures. In February of 2024, an administrative citation was issued, as those permits were never issued. On August 8th, 2024, a subsequent complaint was received regarding construction without a permit. In October of 2024, an inspection warrant was issued to code enforcement staff, and an inspection was conducted within a week of that being issued. Staff has reviewed the appeal, along with the supplemental responses to the notice and order issued, and determined that the unpermitted structures remain a public nuisance. Any updates or changes to the structure will need to be reviewed and approved via a building Staff recommendation and Planning Commission is to adopt Resolution Number 2025-05, denying the appeal and upholding the issued notice and order. The appeal is not defined as a project under sequel and will not require further environmental review. This concludes staff's presentation. The Development Services Department is available to answer any questions or concerns you may have.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead with Vice Chair Barber. You got questions of staff?
Yes, Oscar. Is the compliance officer that has been involved in this investigation, these findings, is he present?
Yes, he is.
Could he join you?
Yes, Frank?
Some of my questions, I think, is more permanent for him to answer, maybe even some might even for our city attorney to answer.
Could I just, as a point of order, I want to make sure that the appellant gets the opportunity to present the appeal, which is very important. So I'll leave it to the chair. My understanding was that the appellant was going to be able to present his appeal before questions are asked, but...
You know what, and thank you, that's fine. If there are no objections by the Planning Commission, and we kind of go a little out of order, we'll go ahead and let the applicant give their presentation. And I've already spoke briefly with the applicant if the applicant would like to come up. You've got 10 minutes, and I think you wanted to speak first, and then maybe Rick wanted to follow up. You have 10 minutes. Rick will give you three as a follow-up, and then we'll go from there, okay? Typically, that's where you would be.
Good evening. My name is Steve Aldaco, attorney for Xyler Properties, who are the appellant in this matter. We would all agree that we are here on a notice and abatement of the...
Hold on one quick sec, sorry. I don't know if the mic is on.
Can we get closer to it?
Oh, okay. You might have to get just a little bit clearer. Reason being is, we want to make sure that the audio recording is very clear. Here's our voice and everything, and it's clear to hear yours as well.
Okay.
All right. Apologies, go ahead.
Again, we would all agree that we are here for the March 5th notice and order to abate a public nuisance at the location of 1004 North Ash Street. Just right off the bat, wanted to ask everyone if they've received the staff report and read the staff report and received our documents in support of our position and read the same documents. Okay. That being said, the staff report on page 14 clearly indicates that Escondido Municipal Code EMC 6-488 is the governing section code in order for this to go forward. Reading that last paragraph on page 14, it says, "The building official shall issue a notice and order and mail a copy by certified mail." That didn't take place, so this is not properly in front of this Planning Commission. It also goes on to state that a proof of service is to accompany that notice and order to abate. And we understand that Mr. Sandoval knows what a proof of service is because he's done this right, at least on one occasion, with my client. If you'll turn to page 24, which is the February 1st, 2024 Notice of Intent to Assess Reinspection Fees, that was properly, well, I don't want to say properly, it was mailed, and a proof of service was accompanied that mailing. That same proof of service should have been attached to this March 5th letter, and it wasn't. That proof of service, if it was done correctly, would have said it was sent by certified mail, which is required in the section code that governs this hearing in front of you. So with that being said, we would ask that we stop this, dismiss this notice and order, and refund my client's payment immediately. Like I said, it's improper to go forward based on what your own staff is citing as an analysis for this matter. Do you want to continue to go forward with this matter, that being said?
Excuse me, so are you asking?
None. It's a bit unusual to kind of answer questions midstream here. However, I think the question is actually pretty germane to whether or not we should continue this, if there was, in fact, improper notification. I don't know what the answer is for that, but...
But then I think someone here who may have the answer is the compliance officer. Did you send a certified letter?
Stan?
Frank Sandoval, code compliance. Yes, I did.
Is there any chance you have evidence of that?
Yes. Would you like me to bring it up?
Yes, but you start it, and I'll pass it around.
This shows that you did receive, post office, or the operator, that you did receive this certified mail and sent a notice to the property.
Thank you. I'll pass this down.
Okay. Real quick, Commissioner Jester.
I wanted to...
Just on this specific portion.
If I may, real quick, before you, and I apologize to interrupt you, but going on the same code section, Section 3 of that same code, "Proof of service of the notice and order shall be documented at the time of service." Again, going back to Mr. Sandoval's February 1st, I think, letter, he did it correctly on at least one occasion. He did not do it correctly here. It did not come with this notice. And again, accordingly, we're not properly before this Planning Commission. Apologies for interrupting you.
While they're discussing, I do have one question.
Are we...
Yeah, go ahead. About this.
All right. Commissioner Stevie?
My one question is, let's assume you prevail on this improper notice. The city is almost certainly going to reissue the abatement, and you're going to be right back before us. What is the advantage?
Well, I think if you had read my documents, you'll see that we're in, it is a huge waste of time and money and effort, and everyone's time, quite frankly. My client simply wants to just get his, well, there's 12 items, alleged violations. I would say at least six of them don't even exist. There's some argument there, but I don't know how you want me to prove things don't exist, but I'm happy to have an inspector, our own inspector. I think we need somebody that's unbiased at this point. I think there's a little bit of bias going on. Water under the bridge at this point, quite frankly. We just want to move forward. That is it. If we can show you somehow that all these 12 items don't exist, I think that would be satisfactory to everybody, and we don't need to be here, quite frankly. Again, I think that there's some hastiness in, and probably because there may or may not be some bias, and I just don't even think we need to go forward with this. We can't go forward based on the law, quite frankly, but I don't think we need to continue this. You mentioned that they may simply reissue. I think it would be a huge waste of time again, because all those items are done. Whether they're permitted or electrical outlets that were always covered, saying they weren't covered, we'll take pictures. Whatever you guys want us to do to get this resolved and not be here again, we're happy to do. I promise you, we are happy to take care of the items. We're not being, we're not opposing things just to oppose things, quite frankly.
Are we discussing it, or are we still asking questions?
This is very unusual. I want to get one more opinion from our city attorney on this, because even though there may be some, and if, thank you for holding the time, by the way, if there is some issue about improper notification, Mr. Sandoval has said, "No, we did the proper notification." There's a bit of a disagreement here. Okay, that happens. Where we're at right now, if I can get your opinion on where we should go based on this disagreement.
Sure. So the city attorney's position is that the certificate, certified mailing was sufficient. It was, you can see the proof of service, which was just passed around to you. That actually is the proof of service. Proof of service is created after the fact to prove that you did complete the service. So what you're seeing is proof of service, and it was sent by certified mail to the address that is listed with the county assessor, which is exactly what's required by the code. And our code section actually states that the service by mailing shall be effective on the date of mailing. The failure of any person entitled to receive such notice shall not affect the validity of any proceedings taken under this article. So even if the appellant didn't physically receive the mailing, for whatever reason, it was served properly to the address at the county recorder's office. Therefore, it is proper service in the city attorney's position.
Okay, I appreciate that. At this point...
Can I ask a question up there?
Yes. Commissioner Jester?
Yeah, quick question up there, just as a matter of procedure in the interest of this topic that we're talking about. So I'm a little confused about the ordinance. The way I read it, it says the building official may use one of the procedures below, and there's several of them here. I'm just wondering, what's the...
Are you talking specifically about service?
Yeah, well, I mean, there's a couple of different methods here.
Sure.
And it doesn't specify that one is required over another.
Well, it does specify that certified mail is required.
Okay.
And the city did complete certified mailing of the notice and order, so...
Thank you.
One other question up there. It appears that this was delivered to a PO box and that it was never picked up, if I'm reading this timeline correctly. So is it still the case that this is proper delivery?
Yes, because from that code section that I just quoted, and again, this is the municipal code, Section 6-488, sorry, 6-488, Section 2, it states that "The failure of any person entitled to receive such notice shall not affect the validity of any proceeding taken under this article." So the fact that they didn't actually receive it is on them. He received that notice, it went to his PO box, he got him into codification that he needed to go pick it up. If the person did not, for whatever reason, pick that mailing up, that is, does not affect the validity of the service.
And along these lines, if, for whatever reason, the Planning Commission felt like they weren't properly served, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I'm posing a hypothetical, is it, does the city have a position as to whether or not this specific hearing is permissible?
Yes, this hearing would be permissible anyway. As you can see, the appellant did get actual notice, so they have, there's no disadvantage to them from, if for some reason the commission felt that this wasn't properly served. They were clearly actually served, which in the law is another reason, you know, it's effective service.
Not under this code, it's not. I know in the law general, I apologize.
Hold on, sir. That's it? That's it? Okay. All right. Very good. It was critical that we kind of, in this part of this, to answer this question, I think our city attorney has given an adequate explanation, as far as I'm concerned, as the commissioner or as the chair, I think we've given the opportunity for the rest of commissioners to kind of ask their questions, to verify. Give me a nod if you're ready to continue to proceed. Okay. What we're going to do now is, we're going to move past that particular point, because there seems to be, from our city attorney, all proper measures have been taken. So what I'm going to do now is, we'll start the clock back up for you, and you can move through the rest of your presentation. How's that?
Before you start the clock, I am going to address this section code again, because I believe she misstated the words in Section 2.
No, no, we're not, no, we're not going to get a dialogue back and forth of your opinion and the city attorney's opinion. We've kind of gotten both opinions, so to speak. There may be a disagreement, but we're not going to work that out here. We're going to move forward on with this hearing at this point.
All right.
Okay? Okay, thank you.
And just so that I'm clear, you guys are siding with the city attorney, who has indicated that it is okay to go forward under this section code, that you guys are siding for us to do this appeal, correct?
Based on the input from our city attorney, we are in line with the code. We're going to proceed.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So I'm just going to read from 6-488, Section A2. It indicates, "The failure of the building official to make or attempt service on any person required in this section to be served shall not invalidate any proceeding hereunder as to any other duly-served person." Again, my client was not duly-served because there was no certification, actually, there's no proof of service of the certified. Okay, beyond that, we've, the notice and order indicates there's 12 alleged violations. In my documents, I put forward some of the citations that Mr. Sandoval has cited for each individual, 1 through 12 of the allegations. And if you have read through it at all, it'll show you that some of the citations don't even apply to the actual description of these allegations, for example. One, for example, the doors between rooms and ADUs have been locked or some way sealed. In fact, they haven't been. It's like a regular door, just like anybody else has a bedroom and a lock on their door. They're allowed, you're allowed to have locks on your door. These have locks on their doors. Going down to 2, for example, no egress, doors exist between rooms. I don't know that that's even required. Egress is something in cases of an emergency. I think we would all understand that to be the case. Egress is required to have you, in a bedroom, for example, not necessarily a bathroom, but a bedroom, and egress can be a window. And in fact, windows do exist on my client's house and the ADUs. So egress is present. I don't know why he, why, Mr. Sandoval points out that there's no egress, because in fact there is egress. So 2 is no violation. Number 3, a permit had not been applied for, in fact, the permit has been applied for a door at the northeast of the ADU. In fact, my client went to check up on this permit, I think, yesterday, and they said they couldn't, and he actually had a couple of the questions regarding the need, necessity for a permit for the water heater, a water heater that existed at an existing home, an old home. And it sounded like, from what I understand, and my client can testify more to this, but the clerk said, "Why would you need a permit for a water heater?" Yet that's one of the allegations in these 12 allegations, is that we need a permit for watering, not to change the water heater out to, from electric to gas or anything like that, just a water heater, didn't have a permit. Again, it's interesting at best. Anyway, so the permit had been applied for in 3, so that's a non-issue. Number 4, there's a door in the main structure. He says it's sealed shut. There's no doors that are sealed shut. Again, we can video it if you want. I don't know how else you want us to prove that, besides him making allegations that are untrue. I don't know how you want us to prove that they're untrue unless you want us to have an inspector, and we're more than happy to have a third-party inspector come inspect it. I don't think we'd be, get very far with having Mr. Sandoval out there again, but I think maybe having a third-party investigator just come out and video, take pictures, whatever you guys request, we're happy to do it, because my client's properties are in compliance. Going on to number 4, the garage has not, has been converted into a residence. It's not. It's a storage unit. And if you, again, if you look through our documents, I have pictures, that there's a bunch of, I don't want to call it junk, but there's a bunch of stuff in there, and it's used as a storage unit. I don't know how else to combat these allegations aside from our pictures. So again, that's a non-issue. 6, there's not enough fire extinguishers. And again, I don't know any requirement for fire extinguishers at a single-family residence. Even, that being said, there was always a fire, at least one fire extinguisher, there's been multiple now, but as he's built more and more units out there, there are at least three or four now, and one is really faded, so it's been there for, since he's owned the property. Nevertheless, I don't know of any requirement, and I think he mentioned that to the clerk he was talking to today or yesterday, and she also was like, "Why do you need fire extinguishers? What do you, why are you trying to get a permit for fire extinguishers on a single-family residence?" Again, I believe it to be a non-issue. It seems to me that we're showing a pattern of allegations that aren't necessarily true, and that's why I think there's some bias here, not only of this property, but other properties of my clients as well in Escondido. Nevertheless, that was 6. So if we go on to 7, smoke detectors, lack of smoke detectors in all the rooms that are required, yet, and again, you guys have seen his, not his, staff report. The staff report doesn't show anything about fire extinguishers or lack of smoke detectors or lack of the carbon dioxide detectors. It doesn't show, with all the pictures that they have, they don't show any of that stuff, which would lead me to believe that it's untrue. The allegation's untrue, and those, there was numerous peoples out there taking photos, I think, fire department, health department, building department, anybody could have taken pictures. You guys have a lot of pictures from, in this staff report. None of them show anything like that. So again, a non-issue. That's 7, the smoke detectors. 8, carbon dioxide, lack of detectors. Again, non-issue, because they do exist. My client, if, I don't know if anybody has seen the property, but it's a very nice property, very well-maintained property. He does this in several locations, and you can see that he cares about what he puts out there as a product. It's not, he's not a slumlord. He's got a very high standard for what he wants to put out there, and he's very safe as well. So 8, again, non-issue. 9, all items around the water heater. There were, there was junk around this water heater, which would be, I guess, somewhat unsafe. But as soon as this March 5th letter came, and as soon as he received it, however he received it, he was literally out there digging the stuff out, and there's no more trash. I think, again, we sent pictures in our documents, that there's no trash around that. I think there were pictures of trash, if I can remember, in the staff report. Nevertheless, okay, all items have been removed, number 9. Number 10 indicates that there are no, that there was a bunch of power receptacles that didn't have covers. Again, I don't know how to prove a negative, but they did have covers. There was no unsafe condition, what... There was no unsafe condition whatsoever. And the only way I can really offer to prove that is having a, an individual timestamped video, go out there and just look at all the receptacles, I guess. But there's, that's never been the case. They've always been, had every one of them covered. Eleven, the water heater at the existing home wasn't permitted. Again, I don't know that it requires a permit. I'm pretty sure it doesn't require a permit. And I think that was confirmed when my client went today or, or yesterday. I can't remember that it doesn't require a permit because the city clerk was a little perplexed as well when he was applying for a permit for the water heater. And then the last one is the address, unit numbers. I don't know if they were, didn't exist or I forgot what the allegation was, but they do exist. They've existed since he purchased it. They exist now. I think they're in multiple locations and they are appropriately placed. That's all I have. And again, I think that we were absolutely not before this panel correctly because you guys are holding us to this section code of the Escondido municipal code and you guys should be held to the same standard. Mr. Sandoval should be held to the same standard. And I, like I said, he has demonstrated, he knows what to do. He has put his proof of service at the time of the letter on this February 1st letter, I believe. And it's attached to it. That's how it's supposed to be done. February 1st, 2024, proof of service right behind it in your staff report. He didn't do that with this, with this March 5th letter and it is not properly before you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zeiler or Zeller?
Zeiler.
Zeiler. If you wanted to give some concluding statements and, and.
Yeah, I would like to give a, well, it's not so much a concluding statement. I just want to speak my three minutes, look you all in the eye, let you know that I do this for a living. I have multiple properties, not just in Escondido, Del Mar, Carlsbad, Lemon Grove, name a city, I probably invest in it. I will not be investing in this particular city anymore based on this man who has attacked me, lied, bold-faced lied. He's lied in every case. You all, if you were all, and Barry, thanks for, nice to see you again, but if you all had a code enforcement officer show up to your house, week after week after week after week and bug your tenants and harass you, but, and I know what's happening. They're trying to hurt me financially. And they are. I mean, I'm getting socked in the face left and right. I have an attorney, I have a couple of attorneys. It's, it sucks, but I, I'm, I'm really looking for number, number one. I have, every single place that I have is safe. And I advise Owen, Dust, all of you guys to drive over to 1004 Ash and look at it yourself. You can't do that because you're going to give probably an incorrect decision tonight because she coached you. But I just want to say this, that I'm angry because he is a liar. He's attacking me and, and it continues. He's, this isn't the first property that he goes to. He goes to every property that I own in Escondido. If he could go to Del Mar and look at my own house, he would do it. And it's bullshit is what it is. I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. This is, it's not just Frank. It's Stephen Jacobson, it's the city attorney. If you, if, like I said, I would love to resolve it. I would love, all I want to do is resolve this. But what I really ask you as the, as the board is what is the city's end game? Is it to create housing? Is it to follow state law with density? Because if that's the case, I'm your guy. I'm your guy. The city is upset because I created a model that maximizes every square foot in the place. And they're mad because they have to approve it because they've made, they, they did it once. By the way, they're not the only city. They did it once, now they have to do it again and again and again. You guys should see the, Doug Moody over here. You should see how many inspectors have to show up to my properties. I've got guys giving me colonoscopies on inspections that is just, you just, you can't believe it. Anyway, thank you for listening. Appreciate you guys.
All right, thank you. At this point, we'll go ahead and move on to questions of staff or either one of the speakers, Mr. Zeiler or, or the attorney.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Barber, if you wanted to start?
Thank you very much. I risk asking this question of the attorney of Mr. Zeiler, but on March 26th, wasn't another of Mr. Zeiler's property brought before the city council for violations? And wasn't the city's findings that he was in violation?
Are you asking me?
Whoever of you would want to speak to it.
I don't know what at all that has to do with this specific.
Both of you have brought up a history that exists.
Excuse me, excuse me. No, no, not, not from.
You're asking me if, I'm sorry. You're asking me if they, he, if we have been here before under the similar circumstances with other properties of Mr. Zeiler?
Yes, as recently as March 26th.
I believe we, city council. It was a different type of matter. It had to do with multi-family unit that was, different circumstances altogether. Was there a reason for your question?
Because I'm sensing a pattern.
So are we. Mr. Sandoval is involved in all of them.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to ask staff questions now. Staff, especially compliance, as they went down the items, then I feel I have an obligation also to go down the items and ask you questions about them. Is your microphone not working? I saw you tap your microphone. Okay, I'm going to go down the same list. Citation number one or violation number one. The doors you, you found in your inspection, the doors were closed as if they were permanently locked and that would allow people to come and go, that they were creating, I'm sorry, I keep turning away from the microphone. That they have, in a sense, have created separate units. Is, does staff have pictures of the photographs that compliance took that they could put up on the screen for us to see the evidence that might exist or might not exist?
Okay, no, no, thank you. Okay, thank you, Oscar.
Sorry, but just to clarify, Oscar, were you looking for the photos that are attached to the planning, the staff report in the packet? So if you wanted to refer, as you're speaking, to the photographs that are attached to the packet that's before the commission tonight, you could refer to those.
Is this, that, is this evidence of what I'm asking or is this of an example of another alleged violation? Page 63.
If, Oscar, if you could find those pictures, that'd be awesome because I don't have the entire package.
I'm going to give this back to you.
I don't, me neither. Yeah.
Should I continue asking questions that might not need any photographic evidence? Okay, see the pictures first? Okay, all right, very good.
Unless there's a question that, that, that would not be for Mr. Sandoval?
No, I think it would and they're both very involved in trying to find the pictures. Yeah, I have that one too, yeah, thank you.
As we're going, as we're going through this process right now, hold on a moment. As we're going through this process right now and just in order to keep the meeting, meeting moving along, is there other questions that can be asked of, of other staff members before we get into these particular line items? Okay, we'll go first with Commissioner McCarroll?
You got it.
Okay, you got it. All right. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, no, just to state that we have the images above that have been provided as the attachments and Frank will be able to kind of walk us through what we're seeing here.
Keith, the photo you're looking at now was taken on the 8th of December, 2023. That's unit A, that's the west-facing unit. That wall that you see there with the TV, it's supposed to be a door there. That wall has, was solid at the time that this photo was taken. If you look to the left of the TV where the clothes are hanging, that's supposed to be, there's supposed to be a doorway there, according to plan. The door, when I was there, according to these photos, and didn't exist when I went and did my initial site survey of the property.
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Can I ask a question about, did, did, did the appellate's attorney provide a picture of this wall? What, what page is that on in your package?
This is a very unusual proceeding. So it, it may be a little more fluid than what, how we normally operate. I still want to make sure that I call on whomever has got a question. We've got Vice Chair Barber that has a list of questions. We've got staff that's just trying to make sure that we want to get through these questions. I have a suggestion, though. We can debate for probably hours on certain code violations, whether it's a building department code violation or, or how you interpret the codes. You know, city says it's interpreted this way. The applicant's saying it's, it may be interpreted a different way. You know, there's obviously some disagreements on, on how we are as, well, how building and code enforcement has approached this particular issue at this location. And what I don't want to do is, is sit here for, for hours, quite frankly, debating what the code says, okay? Because that, that, all of that debate should have been handled a long time ago and come to some agreement. Where I really, really have my concern is that the appeal was properly, properly provided to the, to the applicant. And I'm, I'm not debating on the, the mailing or anything, but the applicant was notified of the various violations. But what really seems the overarching issue here is there's supposed to be a primary residence, a potential junior ADU and an ADU. That's it. There should only be three unless there's a process that you go through to potentially get more. There's all sorts of state law out there that, that will allow for things that go beyond just the primary three. I, I understand that. But there's a process to go through at the city in order to allow you to go with anything beyond the primary, primary use. There is a permitting process to get the ADU and the junior ADU. And once you start deviating from what was being approved, then we're going to have a problem with, with code because now we're, we're just not there following the code. So we can debate all night long, and this is up to the commission, the validity of each and every one of these line items or we can get to the root, root problem here. And, and that's where I would like to start kind of our discussion and, and line of questioning because we can, we really can. I've, I've been in debates, I've been in this industry where I certainly disagreed, not, not here because I don't do that here, but in other jurisdictions where you look at the code, you think it's a certain way, it's interpreted a different way, and you got to come to some agreement at the end of the day, how you're going to comply with code.
Excuse me, Sir Chairman?
Hold on. So I just wanted to toss that out there for us as a commission right now to, to determine where we're going to go with our line of questioning and if it gets us to where we want to be, which is what this appeal is about and what we're really, really trying to accomplish. So Mr., our Commissioner Jester?
Well, I, I agree that the appellate's attorney has made the, the argument on his, on his first page that it was not served properly. That I think is the issue at hand. However, in the, in the pursuit of due process, I believe we owe it to the appellate to look at maybe a few of these examples and just put them to rest in that Mr. Sandoval's reputation here is at stake in singling him out and his property. So maybe we could do one or two. I don't want to sit here all night either because I've got my own opinions on codes.
Right, you know, I, that's, that's valid. We want to make sure that we give you your, your due process, you know, and give you that opportunity. But really to, to debate interpretation of, of code, that's not, that's really not here in, in this form. Primarily, that's, that's with the, the building officials and potentially city attorney outside of here.
I totally agree.
So, but Commissioner Jester makes a very good point. Hey, we owe it to you. You paid the money to come here to be for this body. You know, I, I want to make sure this works for everybody. So it, based on Commissioner Jester, we've got Commissioner Spear that has an opinion.
I think Mr. Steve wanted to say something.
Oh, yeah, I, sorry. So, Mr. Chairman, I agree with your, I agree with your high level. I also want to know, is there a remedy here? So one of the things that has been suggested is, or, you know, that, that has been suggested is we can bring an independent party in to assess and render an opinion about whether these items have been checked off or whether there's actually a missing door, stuff like that. I just want to know, from a process perspective, if we were to sort of just maybe postpone this and give them time to do that, if that might also solve this problem for us?
We'd be happy to do that, happy to do that, by the way. And just to answer your question, Mr. Steve, you asked if I had a picture. If you listen to his testimony earlier, just one second, he took the slide off already. But that he's mentioned, that was from December, 2023. There's been another October, 2024, site inspection. So that had, what doesn't exist anymore. He sent, he showed you a picture that doesn't exist anymore. There is a door right there. I don't want to say he's misleading you, but I don't know why we would even put that on, on the, on the board. You guys, you guys had in the staff report have a whole section of pictures from the October site inspection. I don't know why the December one was shown as though we're doing something wrong.
Well, and that's why I'm. Well, and that's why I'm asking about, like, a remedy that might get us, because it feels like this is kind of a, an evolving situation, I would say. I don't know. I haven't rendered it. I don't have a point of view. I'm just asking, is there a way that we could get that independent third party?
I don't, I don't agree with Mr., with Commissioner Steve. I think that this is a, a matter of whether we are to uphold what the city has done in their notice of abatement and whether it was served properly. I think that's what our purview here is. But I do think that we need to give him some due process, and I don't know that we need to go through a whole inspection process.
And just so everyone's clear, the-
Commissioner Spear?
I would, I would further on that. My suggestion is that there have been allegations made and a question raised on whether there was valid initial inspection by our inspector. We haven't fully given the opportunity to that inspector to justify himself and his actions. I think we need to, at a high level, determine whether the procedure that he enacted in his inspections was well documented and whether we have confidence in his inspection and, and, and his body of work. I think we don't have to go through all of the individual things to do that. We simply need to give him the opportunity to show us, this is what I inspected. This is what evidence I presented and documented at the time. That will allow us to answer the question on the table, which is, was there proper initial investigation on this? Is there proper rationale provided by the inspector to not warrant us getting some other method of inspection on the table?
Again, I don't, I don't think that it's, I don't think that that's what we're being asked of tonight.
So real quick, you guys, you guys are allowed to modify, you guys are not allowed to deny or approve. You're all allowed to modify it.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Commissioner Barber, you started the line of questioning, and you've kind of heard everybody's opinion up here as, as a commission. And, and I do like what everybody is saying, that we still need to give due process. How far do we want to go on addressing each and every line item versus maybe letting Commissioner, or letting Mr. Sandoval go through his process to validate, you know, that he went through the proper protocols and he still stands by, you know, his interpretation and of the, of the code?
I would certainly prefer to see Mr. Sandoval explain to us the procedures he followed and show us what he has documented as to make him arrive to the decisions that he made and the recommendations that he made. I mean, for me, I would like to see him respond to something that was mentioned by the appellate's attorney. As far as going down the entire list of 12 items, that, I mean, that may not be necessary. I just want to make certain he has a chance to explain how he went about his business. I mean, his integrity was severely attacked, which I found offensive. And I want to give him an opportunity to clear his name and show he has any credibility to fulfill the functions that the city has assigned to him.
Okay, perfect. We're going to go ahead and, and follow Vice Chair Barber's line of questioning with what he said to make sure that you, you have the opportunity, Mr. Sandoval, to kind of go through that process and really provide your side of how you go about doing the inspections and coming up with your conclusions, okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Would, would you like to respond to the, that was implied that the photos you were providing us and the evidence you used to reach your decision that we had to take legal action on abatement, that you were relying on information that was outdated and that it had been corrected before you took legal course?
So I'd like to start out by saying it's been misunderstood that I've been going to Mr. Zylar's properties, which is not the case. This has been complaints given to me by other individuals, which initiated this. So I didn't, I didn't go out on my own and find these. I didn't even know his properties existed until I was given these cases.
I, I will say, I want to comment, because when I used to work for the County of San Diego in planning a land use, there was never an inspection triggered unless a citizen contacted the Department of Planning and Land Use and made a complaint and requested inspection. So that's true, what he's saying.
Did a citizen, did a citizen?
I'm, I'm sorry. Right now, we're having a question with, with staff. If we need any more answers from the applicant's team, we will bring the applicant back up, okay? Thank you.
So on around in October 2023 is when I initially, I got the initial information on this. I went to the location and took a look. I, I walked up to the front door of A. In that area, there's a sliding gate. Any postman, UPS, Amazon can walk through there. It's, 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 I'm allowed to walk to the front door to, to talk to somebody if I was delivering mail or anything, working on behalf of the city. When I went, I knocked on the door, contacted the tenant in, in Unit A, spoke to that individual. I actually pressed the intercom button that apparently was being handled remotely by Mr. Zylar, and conversation ensued. I introduced myself, provided my business card to the, the tenant, who subsequently allowed me to look inside the room. That's where I got the photo that was just, just up there. I later, and sometime the following year, I got another complaint. And I followed up with that. In between that time, Mr. Zylar made it clear he did not want me on the property. I was bothering his tenants. Mind you, I've only been on the property maybe, I don't even know if it's been a handful of times. So it hasn't been, I'm at the property every other week. That's just not the case. I have many other cases that I got to deal with. After the subsequent complaint, I followed up with that. Those complaints dealt with tenant improvements that were done without permits. That's what we were dealing with. Not something getting permitted, and then it's all good. It's stuff that was permitted, then subsequently after it was final, then changes were done that were not permitted. In particular, the, the ADU, Unit A. That address was given, that was, the, the city allowed that to have its own address as A, not A, B, and C. And there's proof of that with the city. That's on file. So when I went to go take a look and done these inspections, it got to the, to the point where Mr. Zylar was not, didn't want me on the property at all. I did due diligence and went back and looked at all the, the areas to try to contact people inside to see if I can verify. Either nobody was home, or for most part, with the time that we went, nobody was home. There was no way for me to confirm without Mr. Zylar allowing me or the tenants allowing me to go inside these units to confirm if anything's changed. When we did one follow-up to go check on a unit, it was Unit C. I had some code officers that went to GoToUnitC and took some photos. The tenant allowed them to go in. They took photos which showed a closed door that was locked in between C and B. Since then, I wasn't allowed to go back on the property and, and, and then it came to the point where we needed to do further inspection to confirm. I talked to the city attorney. We end up getting an inspection warrant signed by the judge. We executed that and went and served the inspection warrant, and that was on October 16th of last year. During the execution of that inspection warrant, I took with me environmental specialist. I took with me a building inspector from the city and a fire prevention specialist who does home inspections. The information that I got from them is what I noted in the notice and order. So it's, the, the information going on the notice and order isn't just something that I'm putting on there. This is coming from the experts. They were there at the time of the inspection. They observed everything that's on this notice and order. That's where, that's where these violations came from. After that, I put together all the information, took some time to research, have some internal consultations with staff, along with internal meetings, and were finally able to come up to draft the notice and order, which was eventually mailed out. I reached out to Mr. Zylar probably within maybe a couple of weeks or so, and he didn't want me on the property. So there's no way for me to go and inspect if there's been any changes since my inspections that I did initially to try to find the violations or after, during an inspection warrant. He doesn't want me on the property, and if he's made modifications to things that weren't permitted, I, I'm not going to know, because they won't allow me on the property. Second, those modifications still need to get permitted. So that's where the notice and order comes in.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Barber.
Well, first of all, thank you for your taking a step-by-step through the history of this. And I do see he's, he has taken, they even acknowledge, which I actually applaud him for. So, I mean, apparently he has applied for the permit for the door on the northeast side, so that's good. I mean, I trust your inspection that, and I'm sorry, but I do trust his inspection that there were signs that the garage was being used as a dwelling unit. But I do see your evidence that that's no longer the case. So I'll also thank you for correcting that. I understand your argument that never existed. But my interpretation of the evidence I've seen, I do believe it existed, and I want, I'll just thank you for correcting it. They mentioned that the door, that some of the things that was brought up bother me. So they mentioned that the door was never sealed. Is this the sealed door?
That door there shows where it was once sealed and removed. You can see the foam around the door, and you can see certain fasteners that are around there to keep, to keep somebody from going back and forth. At the time that we were there, that had been removed.
Okay, that's been removed. Okay, yeah, thank you. You know, I'm not going to, there's a lot of things that I actually was going to go item by item, but I'm not going to nickel and dime this. I will say that it is California Building Code Section 105.1. You do need a permit for the water heater. So, I mean, just FYI. But, okay, I'm, I'm satisfied at this point. I'll let another commissioner ask any questions or-
Water heater and supply.
Sir, sir, sir. Like I said, if we want to ask you questions, we'll go ahead and, and bring you up to the podium. There's a couple of reasons, and primarily, we need to be able to hear you when, when you're up here speaking. But it's just not a part of, of the protocols that we have here. So just be patient. You, you might be able to get a chance to say something, but that's up to this body right here, okay?
I have a question.
Commissioner Jester?
So I'm looking at the hot water heater. How, how far off the floor does a hot water have, heater have to be if it's gas-fired?
You're asking me?
Yes.
I'm not a plumber, Jeff, but it's about two feet. So it's, it's raised up in a, in a controlled environment.
If you could come up to the podium, please.
I'm not a plumber. I didn't install it, Jeff. But John Levey, the head building inspector, inspected the water heater when he finalized the house. The house is pretty new. It was built in 2015. And the water heater had been replaced because it broke, but it was replaced with the same water heater, same type of water heater. So it's a gas, I believe it's a gas water heater. So to answer your, your question specifically, it sits up in, on one of those pedestals in a casing, and it's housed.
Commissioner Jester, if, if I, if I could suggest, the building official is sitting in the audience. Could he come up and address that?
Well, I, I, I know that it's 18 inches. Mr. Sandoval? It's 18 inches for a gas-fired appliance?
I'm not a building inspector.
Yeah.
I would have to defer that to-
So I'm just curious. I'm, I'm just looking at it. Looks like it's maybe 12 inches. It's hard to tell from the picture. I'm just curious.
Well, well, no, hold, hold on.
With relation?
Uh, go ahead.
To the water heater?
There's a number of other things with the water heater as well.
Inspector Levey that was with me at the time who identified that as, that it needed to be permitted at the time of the inspection.
Okay, and, and the issue basically is, there was no-
The issue was there was no permit on file for that, and it wasn't installed correctly, dealing with maybe the walls of the tubing and the type of enclosure where it's at as far as distance away from the walls.
Okay. And Commissioner Jester, that's, you have the same understanding?
I don't, but-
Okay.
I, I was just curious about it. It, it looks really low to the ground. And the, the area that it's in, I question whether there's upper and lower combustion air in there. It looks like it's inside of a closet or something. So, I mean-
Now, this, this is a question for the building official.
Yeah. I'm, it's just a question.
The Mr. Sandoval might not have that answer, but the building official may.
I don't think you do, do you? You didn't cite him for that.
I'd ask the chair, could the building official please come up and address this?
Sorry, I know, I knew he was here. Sorry.
Which one? Is it on? Good evening, Chair Wheeler. I'm Doug Moody, the building official for the City of Escondido. I haven't seen the photos of the installation of the water heater. Typically, a water heater is required to be 18 inches above the ground when there are fumes from combustion. So in a garage where there may be fumes from combustion, the water heater is elevated. In an outdoor enclosure where there's, that is not the potential, it's only required to be, I think, the manufacturer specifications, which is six inches above the ground. So in a vehicle, where a vehicle may leak fumes that could combust, it needs to be elevated when it's not in an area where there's going to be fumes. It doesn't require elevation. Whether there's combustion air or proper ducting or strapping or the connections to the gas lines, I haven't seen those pictures, so I don't necessarily know. I did not do that inspection.
Thank you.
Just to follow up. A permit is required by the City of Escondido or even in the building code if you change out a water heater?
Yes, it is, right here. And it's on our website that you can obtain a permit.
Commissioner Stevie?
So I want to abstract this out a little bit. It feels like a number of these violations are tied to the question of whether or not there are three distinct units existing where one ought to exist. Would you agree, Mr. Sandoval?
No. It's what's not permitted in these units.
Well, but if there are, so, okay. The lack of permitted items in these units arise from there being distinct units, or no? For example, the egress situation wouldn't necessarily be an egress situation if there was just Unit A, correct?
I would have to defer that to the building official. That would be his area of expertise.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I would have to defer-
Oh, no, not you. I'm sorry. The other Commissioner Spear was-
The egress requirement between dwelling units is only required if there is no exit from that one unit. So Unit C, if they seal the door between Units C and B, it does not provide a required exit.
Right. But if, if the entirety of the unit was Unit A and there was no Unit B or C, then we would not have this violation?
Yes, that is correct.
So this is what I mean when I'm saying these violations seem to be arising from the supposition that there are three distinct units where one ought to exist. Is that correct?
And you're referring to the single-family residence that's on-site, the detached garage, and the ADU as the three units? Three distinct?
My understanding is that one of the units has been subdivided multiple ways into distinct units.
And that is the ADU that's existing on-site, has been subdivided to three separate units?
Three separate units. So if that ADU on-site was in fact one unit, what of these issues- what of these issues brought before us today would be removed immediately as a concern?
I don't know off the top of my head. We'd have to kind of go through that.
And, and the reason I'm asking is because my question to the attorney for Mr. Ziegler would be, how many actual units are in the ADU? And I'm asking the attorney because of his professional obligations.
Yes, so it's our position that the unit, unit, the word unit is a legal, legal meaning. These are rooms, so we are allowed to have rooms, like any other house has rooms. And because they are not sealed off with a wall, and we have a door that can open and close, they are rooms. So yes, if we had distinct units, units legally called, we would, we would not be allowed to have that. But because we have a door that opens and closes, or can be opened and closed, they are not units, they're rooms.
Sure, so you have one unit with multiple occupants who are paying some sort of rate to have a bedroom and access to the common area. But it is one unit, and you have, and your position is, you have not created physical barriers of any kind to create distinct dwelling places within that ADU that you are then subsequently leasing out and therefore have these unpermitted properties that you're leasing out?
Correct, they are rooms, and they're, if you want to call them roommates, they are roommates. Where, and, and there's plenty of authority that indicates that you are allowed to have as many roommates or people that live with you as you want. And that it's constitutionally held.
Well, sure, look, I lived in a two-bedroom apartment with five other guys during college. Yeah, I mean, so is that your position that that's basically what you're doing? And is it your position that the city has interpreted that, has misinterpreted that as you having created these distinct units?
Yes.
Okay, now, there are, there's evidence been presented to us that these units have been, have been made distinct, maybe for privacy purposes. And for example, the presence of foam and the presence of hinges and stuff. What do you say to those specific allegations, not just by Mr. Sandoval, but apparently by a number of respected city officials who have visited the property and reached the same conclusion?
I think they were incorrectly sealed at one point. They are no longer sealed.
And why were they incorrectly sealed?
I think that, that they may have been a mistake, just somebody made a mistake in sealing it.
Somebody being Mr. Ziegler or somebody being a tenant?
I don't know, to be honest. I know that, I mean, you saw pictures of, I think there's a, just, I know that, I know that you've seen pictures of a bed in front of one, for example, in front of a door.
Sure.
Egress. But that's not Mr. Ziegler.
Yeah, tenants do crazy things, but like foam on a door. If Mr. Ziegler liked to answer, I'd like to hear his answer. Yeah. Zeiler, I'm so sorry. Mr. Zeiler, I, I apologize.
That's all right, Mr. Steve. The door in question, as well as the main residence of the house, was approved by the city official as a final many years ago. Nothing's changed, Mr. Steve, nothing. The door was there. It swung into the same place. To your point specifically, the tenant put a piece of foam because it was loud, so they put a piece of foam where the door is. And then when, when we received the complaint, we took the foam off, and I wasn't going to chisel all of the foam off. I, it wasn't anything to hide because Mr. Levey from the city of Escondido had already approved that. So I, I recognize, to your point, that tenants, in some cases, take smoke alarms down all the time. I probably spend $800 a year on smoke alarms. But I, but they continue, I put them up, I put them up, I put them up. So in regards to the door, it was a piece of foam that they got from Home Depot and they just stuck it in.
So if, if you're here, I would appreciate asking a couple more questions. My family has been in the property ownership business my entire life. We've had tenants my entire life. I'm 40, so a long time. And we have seen this, right, tenants do things, and sometimes they're crazy. I appreciate that fact. But what I'm trying to understand is, were these tenants behaving in a way that they were, where they're doing foam and all these other things because they were under the impression that they had a distinct unit? Or do they view themselves as roommates of one unit?
They, do they view themselves as roommates? You would have to ask them. I think when we ran out rooms, they're rooms.
Yeah.
There, it's not a, we don't say, hey, you're roommates with Mr. Steve.
Sure.
We say, this is your room, and we don't, we don't make that distinction.
So in your leasing agreement, there's not like a, you're renting this address, Unit B?
We do. We, we say suite B, suite, or room A, room B, room C, yes.
And what's the purpose of that?
The purpose of that is to rent the room.
So you, you're only, when you say room A or suite A or however the language is in the lease agreement, that is only to indicate which room in this building?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and it is not their impression that they are, like, you have not subdivided the junior AD, or the ADU in any way to suggest you have your own kitchen, you have your own...
As a matter, a matter of fact, Mr. Steve, the idea of subdividing the rooms came from the code compliance officer at the city of Escondido. He gave me the idea.
What do you mean?
I mean, years ago, we had a property in Escondido that they got, that they wanted a... By the way, I've been doing this for many, many years, like you. But they wanted the inspection, they wanted, I had problem tenants. Finally, we, we got in, and the, no, the day before, the inspector, Mr. Stephen Jacobson, asked me to come in and speak with him, and I did. And he said, I understand you have walls separating units. And I said, what do you mean? And he said, there's walls separating interior doors or interior walls. And I said, do you mean to tell me that if there are doors, we're compliant? He said, yes. So I, I basically use that in all of my places, all over San Diego. So to, to specifically answer your question, yes, they are separated by a lock-off door. So just like a hotel room, get in there, hotel, it's the exact same as a hotel room, exactly the same.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on. Commissioner Spear?
Just a summary question to, to the inspector. I understand that there are a number of, I don't want to get into the details of all of the different violations that were noticed. Just in broad-term categories, though, the types of, of non-compliances that were noted, we, we've gone through a number of them that involve safety concerns. We talked about egress, for example. So we understand that there were a number of those. We also have non-conforming use, where, I assume, where violations in, violations were noted of uses that were not, is that correct?
There is no non-conforming issue or concern for this property.
Unpermitted structures, that was another? So we have those two general types?
Correct, the garage, it's supposed to be used as a garage, but the code violation that we have is that it's been used as a habitable space.
Okay, that was at the time of the, at the time of the, of the inspection that was performed, that was determined that that you, that that garage was not appropriate? Is that correct?
There was two times I went there. One was during an initial time when I went to try to contact the tenants to see if they would allow me access to look. At that, the initial time, there was nobody, nobody home. However, during that time, there, a door, there was a fenced around the door to the garage. And there was, I think, some turf on the ground, kids' toys, things that you would let your kids play there. Then there was also an air conditioner that was a, you want to call it like one of those window air conditioners that were in there. That, there leads me to believe, and it was in the summer when I went out there, that there's somebody, somebody staying in there.
It looked inhabited.
Then, when we got an inspection warrant and we served that, when I went inside, they still had a kitchenette. They still had a wall and a doorway separating the garage, like it had been converted back to a living space that shouldn't be there. They also had appliances that looked like they were unhooked and put in there, a stove, a refrigerator, which leads me to believe that this, why would that be in there?
In a garage?
And why, why would the wall still exist if it's not being used? As, 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 as a space, habitable space.
Okay, since, so you had those two reasons for coming to your conclusion. Since that time, you have not been able to inspect it, and you don't currently know if that's different now?
No, I haven't been given the opportunity to go and inspect.
Okay, so to your knowledge, based on that information, that was one of the items that you noted as, as not compliant with the code, correct?
Yes.
Non-permitted, okay. So I'm understanding that there are two broad, two broad types of, of non-conformances or violations. One with regard to safety in a whole bunch of different terms, and the other with a regard to non-permitted structures. Okay. And to this date, you have no verification whether those items have been corrected or not because you have not been able to re-inspect?
That's correct. So if I could also add, the whole purpose of these notices are to get compliance. That seemed to not work, and it advanced to the point where we, we have, we're at this point now.
In, in the normal course of, of, of operations and, and getting these problems resolved, you would typically await an invitation for re-inspection? Once, for example, if, if something's not permitted, you're looking for the applicant to then submit for a permit for the non-permitted areas? If it's a case of not, of violations and safety matters, you're looking for a re-inspection invitation from the applicant so that you can go and re-inspect? Is that the normal procedure?
Yes, those where their need permits are required, we give them a timeframe and, and a deadline that could, if they're working towards something, could, could adjust. And those instances, we do look and keep, keep track with them and, and touch base with them on the need to continue with applying for permits and continuing through the process till the end until one's issued. Those other issues where it could be a fix, where they just need to, for example, a smoke detector, we would say, hey, could you please let us know when that's done? We'll come back and re-inspect it, and we'll check it off. That, that would be the normal way that we do business.
Have you received an invitation to come and re-inspect for some of those safety items like the smoke detector? Have you been asked to come and re-inspect?
I have not, but I've offered to go and have been denied.
Okay, and for the non-permitted structures, has there been an application submitted for permitting? Or plans or any, any, any efforts to further that process?
I was aware of recently, within the last day or two, of Mr. Zeiler submitting a permit. I'm not sure exactly what's all on that permit application.
Okay, how does that, your knowledge to the date or timing of that permitting, how does that fit into the deadline, timing request that was given to them to, to do that?
Initially, there was, this started back in 2023, so we're going back to an, an initial notice violation that he received for the, the ADU issues prior to receiving the notice and order. So that has been going on since 2023 and up to this point, which I've been pretty fair as far as giving all this time to kind of him for liaison with me to let me know that if things are getting done or to, to put in a permit, an application and apply for permits. So to answer your question, it, it plays a part in sense on, is, is somebody's doing their part, then we continue to work with them. But at some point, the city has to take a stance on how long's, long enough before it just becomes delay, 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 to the point where maybe people think that it's just going to go away and the city's going to forget about it?
In the normal process, if there's a violation and the city inspection determines, hey, you know, looks like there's a non-permitted structure here. If that's the case, you need to submit a permit for it. What's a typical timeframe from letting them know about that to expecting that they would submit for a permit? What's a typical timeframe?
Typical timeframe that, that we give is about 30 days. That's not to get a permit because since COVID, permits have taken a long time.
Okay.
So I understand that the actual permit in hand is going to take, it's going to take months, I know that. But what we'd like to see, the initial 30 days, is for them to get, compile all the information that's needed, all the required documents, submit them to the city with an application and get the process moving. And in, in this case, prior to recently, that, that wasn't happening.
Up until possibly days or weeks ago, that had not occurred?
No.
Okay. That timeframe is helpful to me. I appreciate that. Any... Thank you.
Do you have a, do you have a question? Commissioner, Commissioner McCarroll?
So to follow up to Barry's well-put questions, and I think we have a clear idea of what needs to happen, can we now, instead of debating, has it happened, has it not? I think we're pretty clear with where we stand. Is this a point where we can ask the, Mr. Zeiler to take care of these items, show proof that they've been remedied so we can move on and have them close us out and have the city be appeased and get what they want? For proof that these items have been remedied? Can we do that now?
I mean, what is...
I don't know if that's consistent with...
Let's, let's ask the, the city attorney, please.
So, yes, I, I would just like to, I can clarify the commission's job tonight. So basically, the question before you tonight is whether you want to appeal, grant, or deny the appeal. That's really the only question before you. And granting the appeal would mean that you're finding that the notice in order to obey the public nuisance was issued erroneously at the time it was issued. And that's really the only question before you tonight, is whether it was properly issued.
You can grant, you can deny, or you can modify. It's in the code. It's the very last sentence of this, of this section.
Sir, hold, sir, hold on. This is, this, you, you've had your opportunity to, to plead your, your position right here. We're asking questions of staff, and then if it is appropriate for our question, we will ask you to come back up and, and continue to opine on, on your position. But right now, just hang on until we ask the question, okay? Please. Let's, let's finish with this line, well, with your line of questioning. Are you satisfied from what came from the city attorney?
Can we modify?
I'd like you to, if I could ask the attorney what code section you're referring to, I will double-check and see.
Six dash four eight eight, the same thing, the very last sentence of the, the very last paragraph of it, under Section 5. Planning commission appeals will be placed on next available agenda. Planning commission by a majority vote may approve, modify, or disapprove the decision of the building official. So it's not just approve or deny. I, I don't want her to mislead and mischaracterize what the code says. We're asking you to modify it. We'll, we'll take care of it. That's all. I apologize for getting a little bit...
Okay, thank you. No, it's, it's a different, it's a different world right here. I'm just trying to keep it under control, so.
So I just want to clarify that the city does have a process for correcting the violations, and that is the process that was just laid out by the code compliance officer. If the commission wants to, in some way, revise the original notice and order that was issued, I suppose they could, the commission could do that if it wanted to.
So, go ahead, you want to... Commissioner McCarroll, did you have a follow-up to this? I just want to make sure that, that you get your opportunity here before I start.
Well, it, it just seems it would be, in my opinion, in the best interest of our city and Mr. Zeiler to have them remedy everything that the city is asking for, and then have the city, you know, sign off on it, and everyone moves on happily. Otherwise, what happens? We deny their appeal, and they take it to city council and waste more time there? I'm just, there has to be some type of solution for everyone to be satisfied, in my opinion, of, of all these things that we've discussed. And at least an opportunity to show that these items have been remedied. I mean, smoke alarms, fire, you know? The wall is no longer closed up, there's a door. I just would like to have all parties be satisfied.
Okay. Commissioners Jester, you have something else? Another question, because right now, we're kind of in questions before we start.
Sure, okay.
Before we start our discussion here about how we want to proceed.
I was just reading, uh, four eighty-eight five. I, I see that it says mo, modify, but I'm not sure what that looks like. We have a resolution. On the other side of the coin, that would be preferable, but Mr. Zeller's been given an awful lot of time and has been kicking the can down the road, so I don't know. I think that, uh, between a rock and a hard place here, what, what would a modification look like? Do you have any idea, Dare?
I do not. That's up to the commission. I think, again, I think your job is to either grant or deny the appeal. If you feel there's something you can modify, that's up to you.
I would, in response to that, I would, I would, I would suggest that, um, our attorney has, we don't need to second guess or create a mechanism because we already have one. There is a process. We don't, as a planning commission, we are not in a position to take on the role of the, of enforcement or verification. There is a mechanism already in place, so modification to me, if there is a reason for one and a justification for a modification, I, I certainly, it seems that there's a, a mechanism for that, but we already have an enforcement mechanism and a verification mechanism in place.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to weigh in just a little bit here and then we can, actually, hold on. Any other questions of staff and the applicant? Because I want to make sure everybody's questions get answered before we actually start deliberating on which direction we want to end up taking this. Because I, I've got ideas, I think, um, you know, I've heard other ideas presented, but let, let's make sure we get all of our questions answered and then we'll close the public testimony portion and then we can go into our discussion about how to proceed. Any other questions of staff or the applicant? All right, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask something because I'm, I'm a little confused on how these rooms are set up. And first, I'm going to start with, uh, Mr. Sandoval here. So I'm going to start very broad. We, we've got, and maybe bring up the, um, the site plan. Thank you. You saw where I was going. We have the primary residence. And going through the course of time, just to the east of the primary residence, what was, it was at one time, I think, a garage which was converted to an ADU. Okay? So it's a living type unit, self-sustainable unit, bathroom facilities and kitchen facilities. You can go into definitions about kitchen facilities, but there was, it, it was its own separate type of unit. And then somewhere along the way, further to the east, a larger ADU was constructed, okay, which was a two-bedroom ADU with what looked like a living room and kitchen facilities in the middle. I don't remember where the restrooms were. And, and in both of the bedrooms, there were bathrooms? And the living room, thank you. So that's how you understand it, Mr. Sandoval, that an ADU, uh, uh, another ADU got built and in that, as a part of that process, the prior ADU that would be just to the east of the new ADU, that one was supposed to be converted back to storage, not necessarily a garage, but storage. Am I kind of at least on the right track at this point?
Yes. And that would be the garage that we're talking about that needed to get converted back to storage, which would involve the removal of things and the wall that separates, that, that divides the garage.
Okay, so if, if we're looking at this site plan, and you got the primary house, which is, if, if north is off to the left, I think that's right. Correct? Anyway, the, the primary house is at the bottom?
Correct.
And then just above that was the first ADU that was, that was constructed. And then after that, another ADU was constructed, which is to the top there. As a part of the approval and permitting process of that ADU, the original ADU was to be converted back to storage.
That's correct.
Now, here's where my question is leading to. As a part of that permitting process, was an inspect, oh, thank you, that, that works. As a part of that process, oh, we still don't have the other one, though. Let me go back to my question. As a part of that process, the first ADU, which is the smaller one, was the requirement to gut that so that it is now a garage or open storage area?
There were requirements that that garage needed, there were things that needed to be removed.
There were requirements for the garage that would need to be removed for the, for the new ADU to be built at the time. And that was removal of a wall and some of the.
Which wall? Which wall?
You can see it in the image here.
The, the little dotted wall that was in, that's in there on this?
Right, that's, that was supposed to be removed and you can see that some of those dash lines kind of go along the kitchen area.
I got it. Okay, so in other words, it, it essentially eliminated what was originally a bedroom. Okay? So now, what is there today is what? The four walls, the bathroom, looks like washer and dryer, and the kitchen, the kitchen has been removed? Because it looks like that was a part of the intent.
What I saw, my expectation, is what you see on that plan. Stuff that was supposed to get removed is still there, at least from what I saw.
Including the wall?
That's correct.
Okay. That's a problem right there that I see. So that should have been taken care of at the time that the other, that the, that the bigger ADU received occupancy? I mean, prior to receiving occupancy, this stuff probably should have been done.
Yes.
And according to Mr. Sandoval here, it hasn't been done.
And that is correct also.
Okay. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of seeing that there's just a, it's a, it's kind of tough for everybody, I get it. So we need to get this stuff corrected. And, and there's probably multiple things that go beyond this, but this is the one I wanted to focus on to, to see how we address the original stuff that was, was happening. So as Commissioner McCarroll says, it seems like, you know, there, there's, should be a pathway to get this resolved, but we'll get into that discussion. But that completes my questions that I had. I got a whole bunch of others on the, on the second ADU, but it, it, at this point, it's kind of irrelevant because we haven't resolved the original permit for the new ADU with this other pri, first ADU, golly. That, I don't have any more questions. Any more questions? We'll go down the line here. Any more questions? Any more questions, the staff or the applicant? Okay. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and close the public testimony at this point. And we can open it up for discussion by the commissioners. Who wants to start? Anyone?
All right, the reason I'm not going to start, I want to listen to, to others' input because I see two sides that both, one represented by Commissioner McCarroll and one represented by Commissioner Jester. I mean, I do understand wanting to have some empathy and find a solution that satisfies both the city and the property owner, but I also agree, in two years, there's been ample time to, especially given that, and this is why I brought up the past history, that is, that he's had, when he's had to deal with co, violations and tried to resolve them with the city. He, he knows the process and he knows what the consequences are if he doesn't take, follow proper procedures and take action. And over two years, he didn't. So I'm wrestling with that versus what Commissioner McCarroll suggested, that she would like to see some happy solution that makes everybody feel that rights has been done. So I'm, I would rather, I want to listen to others' input before I reach a decision.
Commissioner Spear?
I guess when I try to boil this down for my own thought process, what I think of is this. Number one, you know, it's been characterized that, hey, this is a harassment or inaccuracy. So in, as I look at those, you know, allegations, I ask, hey, is this, is this a case where a good citizen or a good, um, property owner is trying to operate in due diligence and in uprightness and is just finding it difficult because the city's giving them a hard time? When I see, number one, that the impetus for inspections is not harassment, but is, you know, um, um, reports or, or complaints from the public, that that is the trigger for us to go out and inspect. When I look at the number of inspections that has actually taken place, none of those, none of those inspire me that this is harassment. When I hear the allegation that, look, you know, there are a bunch of mistakes and misunderstandings and the, the violations noted are incorrect, I look and see what's the procedure that the inspector did. Well, the inspector went through and noted, here's what the approved plans say, here's what I see. And I take a picture of it and document that. To me, that's due diligence. That's operating by evidence and by legal documents. So I, I, I don't see that as being the case in what's characterized. When I see that the city has a patient process for remedying nonconformances or violations or safety issues or nonpermitted aspects, that the, the, the patient process is, look, we're letting you know there's something not right here, we want you within a reasonable time to address it. You know, if you have questions, if you need re-inspections, come to, come to us. And then when I see that it's now years later, and finally, we are getting potentially an application after years, to me, that just doesn't strike me as, um, trying to remedy the situation. When I think of this body trying to suggest, well, let's jump into this and let's do it for them, let's get this thing resolved, I say, I, I don't think this is the body to do that. We have that in place. And from everything I see, it's been done in a patient and professional manner. When I hear that the applicant has had, going back to as, as, as Mr. Zeller has, has commented, multiple other situations where you've dealt with this before, again, that speaks to, you know, is this a pattern? You should know. You know, the applicant should know this is the process, this is not, oh, I didn't understand. Or, you know, it, it's, it's, by now, I would think this is a process where a quick remedy, if it was desired, would have taken place already. So these are the, these are the rationales that I go through in deliberating over this to say, in my role, in my discretionary role here today, are we looking at a case of misunderstanding, inappropriateness by the city, impatience, unreasonableness? I don't, I just don't see that. So that's where I'm coming from on all of these issues. I appreciate all of the comments that have been given and the questions put forth. It's helped me to see and, and gather, answer the questions that I have as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Stevie?
I don't have much to add to what Commissioner Spear said.
Perfect. Commissioner, let's go with Commissioner McCarroll.
I agree with everything that Barry just stated. It's, you know, obviously true. But I'm just wondering, and, you know, being in this industry, doing these plans, going to the city for permits and construction changes, I just, I feel like it could be remedied and then it ends. That's all I'm saying. But I do agree with you, Barry.
Commissioner Jester?
I'm gonna have to confer with, um, Commissioner Spear. I, I feel like this has gone on long enough. We do have a mechanism in place which is important. I'm satisfied that, uh, that Mr. Sandoval did his job, which is really to answer, you know, a complaint, basically. And, um, found some conditions that were questionable and, uh, did his, spent his time in his due diligence researching them and seeing what was obvious and recording those, taking pictures of those. And then Mr. Zeller not allowing him to come back onto the property, um, that just doesn't work well. I mean, if you got nothing to hide and you fixed everything, you let, you let the code compliance guy come back out. And you let him look at it.
He was out.
So.
I think. Hold on, hold on. Let's, let's just make sure that we're not having the dialogue out with.
Yeah, well, I'd like to, well, I'd like to find a, you know, an alternative, you know, to this very difficult matter. I'm not sure what a, what a modification looks like and I, I really have to, it's a sync, it's succinctly as dare put it, it's either an approval or denial. It's just that simple. That's, that's our role here.
Okay. Commissioner Stevie?
Sorry, one question. If, so if we approve, um, if we follow the staff's recommendation and in the interim between this meeting and the meeting before city council, which I think is the next step, correct?
On appeal.
On appeal, if they choose to appeal, uh, if they go and get an inspection, does, does that wrap everything up? Are we, is this resolved? Like if, if Mr. Sandoval's a lot on the property and he walks through and he checks all the boxes, are we done?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to understand.
I might have to get staff to, to weigh in on that, um, what the, what the procedure would be, to be honest.
The whole goal is compliance. That, that's what I've been trying to get this whole year and a half to almost two years now. That's the goal. If, if the city attorney and supervisor allow that, which is what we're shooting for, this is what the, the notice and orders for, is to give him a timeline to correct the violations. If he can do that, I don't see why we can't, but he's, he's, he's got to be committed to taking care of not just stuff that he can go and change out real quick, but to get all the permits for the, for the stuff that needs permitting.
So, let me, let me try and say this as, as, as simple as I can. I agree with the, the comments that my fellow commissioners have been making about, um, you know, uh, how this has evolved over time, and it's been a long time. It sounds like, you know, there may have been, um, misunderstanding. I truly think that city staff did everything that they could. They went through the appropriate steps, they did the notification, um, and outlined all the things that need to be corrected. And maybe there's some disagreement on interpretation. Why that hasn't gotten resolved and the animosity, um, that has occurred over the process, you know, that, that's kind of an aside. I think what really needs to be done is, um, and there was ample time given, was to have a dialogue with city staff and maybe it's not on site, maybe it's here, maybe it's discussed this, each and every line item down, you know, that, uh, was presented to the applicant as far as the violations go. go. And as you go through that process, you, you come to some agreement on each and every one before you leave the room. And then if, if you can't do it in one meeting, you do it over 10 meetings. Who, who, you know, who knows? But at some point, everybody's got to sit on the same page. I've worked in the land planning industry for 37 years. And each and every project that I've ever worked on, we never agreed between what the applicant wanted and what the city wanted. We'd never agreed 100% right out of the shoe. Okay? There was our interpretation on, on the private side with the builder and the applicant, and there was the city's interpretation. And so we had to ultimately come to an agreement as to what the real interpretation was of whatever rules or regulations or codes are in place. But at the end of the day, we have to come to an agreement. Otherwise, you're at this body. And that's where we are today. And you know what? Each and every one of these codes that there's a disagreement on, we're not the experts. The experts are staff. And, and now we're at a situation where we're at an impasse and you got to come to this body to determine where we're going to go from here. So in my opinion, with the appeal that was, that came before us and hearing from both the applicant and, and the city's procedures, I think that the city followed proper procedures. They documented what was going on. If there were changes in the interim, opportunity was not given to go out and re-inspect. It seems like permits that were requested of the city have not been submitted, and those things need to be submitted. If there's a disagreement between the applicant and the city on what permits need to be submitted, you got to come in and just talk it through. Because I think in listening to, to the applicant, I think that he, he's reasonable enough to want to do this, but somehow the communication lines are just, it's just not, you know, meshing together. I think it can be. We've got some really good staff members here that I think can be very helpful. But you got to have that discussion. I think, you know, not allowing city inspectors onto the site, that's not, I don't think that that's helping the, the entire process. So with that said, here's, here's my, my question procedurally is whether or not we, we stop, we pause this process right now before it goes further off to City Council. And we say, look, we're, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna put this appeal off to the side. We're gonna give the, the applicant one more opportunity to sit down with city staff, go line item by line item, come to an agreement on what needs to be done, and it's going to be a finite time period. We're not going to let this go on and on and on. And we can probably set maybe a date by, by this body that this is gonna, it's either going to come back to us, the appeal is going to come back to us, and we're at an impasse, and that'll, that's the only way it'll, will come back to us, or hold off. Mr. Sandoval and, and the building department and the planning department could go, you know what? We're actually making some headway now. And let's extend the period of time that we put this appeal on hold. But I, I, I just don't, and as Commissioner McCarron said, we got to come to resolution. Going off to City Council, I, it, it's not going to resolve this. It's just not. But it's got to be resolved. And, and otherwise, it gets really nasty. And, and, and nobody wants that. The applicant doesn't want it, the city doesn't want it, we don't want it. So my question would be to the city attorney, can we just pause this appeal without a decision at this moment? Let, let city staff and the applicant have a sit-down in short order to see if the miscommunication of issues and/or discussion and agreement of what's outstanding can get resolved in a timely manner? Can, can we do that? Procedurally?
I believe procedurally you could do that because basically you could, you could make a motion to do just that, and you would be effectively postponing or continuing the hearing. You would be continuing the hearing, in effect, to open, and you would have to come back and basically have another hearing where the parties would come back and let you know what happened, if that's the way you want to go.
Okay. And, and hopefully, if, if we decide to go that direction, that hearing gets done real quick. Hold on. So I, I don't have really much more to say than that. It's an idea I'm kind of throwing out for the commission, and, and we can kind of discuss that. Commissioner Jester, you had a question?
Yeah, I kind of like the idea. I'm thinking maybe 30 days should be sufficient time to, you know, and then maybe come back and hear it again. And, and if there's progress made, then it could be extended 30 days.
Which is a good idea. Can we, can we do this instead of bringing the, the appeal back in 30 days? Can we just get a report from staff on the progress before we set a date specific to rehear this appeal? I know it's a, it's a, procedurally, it's a mess. I get it.
Yeah, this is, I mean, it's difficult. You have a pending appeal right now. So the problem I see with that is, it's, we have to be fair to the appellant who deserves to have his appeal, he heard and decided upon. So that's what I'm grappling with. I'm not, you could perhaps ask, ask the appellant if he would agree to, to that, if that's what the commission decides it wants to do.
Okay, hold on one sec. Okay.
Does that help? Is it?
Uh huh, uh huh. Commissioner Spear.
Couple thoughts on that idea. I like the idea, however, here's the problem I have with it. There is, there has been and continues to be that opportunity already in existence. This process has gone on, and it is a, it is a lengthy process of enforcement. If somebody chose by, for whatever reason, chose to not follow the proper procedure, to not comply, and to drag the process on as long as possible in defiance, they at any time could choose during that process, that lengthy process, to comply. There's nothing that prevents that from happening, even on appeal. To suggest that this lengthy enforcement procedure, appeal after appeal after appeal, should then be extended further to me, when that opportunity already exists, only extends the enforcement mechanism further for someone who does not want to comply. That's what worries me.
Chair.
Oh, there we go.
Thank you. So I have listened to all of your input, and I both appreciate, I thought everybody made a very good point. But I think where I've landed is, I agree. I think there's been ample opportunity over two years to show some good faith effort by the property owner to want to comply. And again, he's had a history with this in the past, so he knows what's expected. He knows what the procedures are. He knows what the consequences could be. I'm, I'm sorry, I do not think there was any miscommunication or misunderstanding. I think this was, in my opinion, I think this was deliberate foot-dragging on his part. For whatever reason, I just, maybe it's a property rights issue, but for whatever reason, I believe that the appellant feels, it's my home, it's my property, I'm not going to have a bureaucracy come in and tell me what I have to do and when I have to do it. So I, I'm not going to support continuing it. If you want me to support continuing, I'm going to definitely need a specific deadline for them to comply and not just a progress report.
And what Commissioner Spear had said, and, and you reiterated, yeah, I, I, I believe that enough time has passed, that there has been ample time, where I'm seeing, what, what seems like is, there might be the ability, and I agree, it, it, and now I'm thinking this through a little bit further, that there has to be a finite time. This is like, hey, this is your last chance. And i-if we so chose, yeah, you got, you, you have, whatever, two meetings, and there's got to be progress. Otherwise, you know what? We, we, we make a decision one way or the other. But I agree, I think ample time has passed. I think there's been a lot of effort on this. Quite frankly, it's probably been too much effort in order to get this issue of the violations corrected. Commissioner Jester.
I agree. But I also think by this commission having a small amount of grace toward Mr. Zeller as a property owner, taxpayer here, one more opportunity may restore his faith in Escondido. I don't know. It's sad, but I think he feels like the city has, has really headed out for him, and I don't think that's the truth. And I think we have an opportunity to maybe reverse that a little bit here tonight.
Anyone, anyone else?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
I'm prepared to second a motion.
Depending on what motion that is.
You know what? I, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna do something I, I rarely, rarely ever do. But I'm going to open up the public testimony for one question, and it's got to be brief. So, I'm, no, I don't, I don't want to hear any, any oratory at this point. I'm going to ask a question, and I need an answer. I have suggested, and, and of course Commissioner Jester feels that maybe one more opportunity might get this so that we're not off at City Council on another appeal. And we, we, I'm, I'm thinking that we want to have a finite amount of time, and it's, and I think it should be two hearings, so whatever that date comes up to, so it wouldn't be the next hearing, but the following hearing, that we, we postpone a decision on this item. So you guys, the applicant has an opportunity, one last time, to sit down with the city, allow for whatever inspections need to be done. That's the, that's city staff's prerogative on how they operate. But to try and get this resolved within that finite period of time and come to an agreement how that resolution's going to occur with specific timeframes. So the question I'm asking is, do you want that opportunity, or do you want to continue off, um, or do you want to have us make a decision on what's before us this evening?
We would love the opportunity to resolve everything within your finite time limit.
Okay. All right, that's it. Now I'll close the public testimony unless somebody's got another question since I opened it back up. Okay. We'll close the public testimony, then we'll get back to our deliberations.
Perhaps it's for staff or, or, or the attorney, and that is, what is the timeframe if there were an appeal filed? Let's say that, that the, the appeal was denied tonight by the planning commission, and let's say the applicant forthwith applied for an appeal to the City Council. What is the expected timeframe where the City Council would hear their appeal?
So the appellant would have 10 days to file that appeal, and then it would be placed on the calendar for City Council. And I can't give you an exact timeframe because it's really going to depend on the calendar. I believe, you know, they would try to put it on the calendar as soon as possible. I don't know exactly what that entails.
It would be at the, at the earliest of 10 days plus the next, the, the, the next City Council meeting would be the absolute earliest that that could happen. Say that would be roughly, I don't know, say a week at the earliest. So we're talking about a minimum of 17 days.
Correct.
Okay. Rough numbers. That provi, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud that that could potentially provide a mechanism that we're trying to put in here to head off this enforcement process. If the appellant decides within that 17 days or more, I mean, they would be in charge of that anyway because they would be filing the appeal. That would provide an opportunity for them to, in good faith, get earnest in, in remedying the problem, and that could abate the whole issue. So does that provide potentially what we are putting on the table? It, it is fully in the applicant's control to provide that mechanism on their own.
Yeah, but I don't think there's any way they could possibly remedy everything. There's a lot of stuff that has to happen.
That would be my question to staff. Would 17 days be a reasonable amount of time?
With the permit process? No.
Let me ask this. Is even 30 days a reasonable amount of time for you to sit down and at least come to some sort of agreement and timeframe by which this stuff is going to be, get done? And as soon as there's one hiccup, I, I mean, then you're right back at this body. And, and, and you know what? Because maybe there is no remedy. Maybe we've, this has gone as, as far as it can go with staff trying to remedy this, this problem.
I guess the question is, is what's going to be considered a reasonable amount of time?
Right.
Taking into consideration the amount of time already given. I, I really, it can be hard to answer what's going to be a reasonable amount of time, given the permit process, given what needs to be done. That's going to be a tough question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know that it's going to be 100% resolved in, in 30 days, but if there are permits that are necessary in order to take care of things, there's some easy things, and there's time-consuming things. So you get the easy things done. Okay? That demonstrates a, a desire to resolve. Knock off all the easy things, and there's probably a dozen or more. And then there's going to be the permitting side. Now, the problem being is putting the cart before the horse. Because you need the permits in order to do the work that was probably already done that can go, you go through the permitting process, you got to have stuff located where it needs to be located, how it needs to be affixed to the walls, and so on and so forth. And, and, and my concern now is that, okay, 30 days isn't going to be enough to submit and approve a permit so that you can figure out exactly everything that really, really needs to be completed. We're, we're in a bad spot here.
So, point of clarification, Mr. Chair. My understanding is, there's really only like one item that needs permitting, right? It's that door? Are there multiple items?
Door and the boiler.
The door and the boiler, okay. But what I understand...
Sorry, and then the conversion of the garage to remove the interior, the garage which has the interior wall to remove that and the little kitchenette that's also...
But that's not a permit issue.
That's not a permit issue. That's part of the original building permit, but they would have to rectify that as part of it.
So, so what I'm getting at is, it feels like of the list of items that were provided to us, what the appellant has represented tonight is that if Mr. Sandoval shows up tomorrow, those things are taken care of in entirety. And the things that are outstanding are just paperwork permit stuff from the city, but like we should see a door, or we should see a permit. The walls should be gone, the kitchenette, whatever is required to be removed. Theoretically, tomorrow, Mr. Sandoval could show up, and most of this list is wiped out. That's what has been represented to us. Is that your understanding of the testimony tonight?
Without the building permit, we wouldn't be able to have an inspection to verify any of these... Without the building permit, we wouldn't be able to have an inspection to verify any of those other items. But yes, the sequence of event, if a building permit was issued for those other items, then those things that are, require inspection could be cleared.
Wait, why does there need to be a building permit issued for those other items? I thought that the whole argument was that there was additional work that had been done beyond a permit that was already issued. And you're asking for that work to be undone?
Correct. I'm just, I'm stating that the other building permits that would be required would still need to be facilitated as part of this process.
For the door and for the boiler?
Correct.
Okay. And for the what?
The removal of the interior wall that's in the garage.
Why does that have to be per, I'm just, I'm lost, I'm sorry.
Sorry, not permitted. That just has to be rectified.
Right, right. But that's not a permit question. That's not a timing of city staff question. That's just a, you walk in, you take a look, is there a wall, or is there not a wall?
Right.
Okay, and there should be not a wall?
Correct.
So, so to the question of timing that the chair is putting before us, in 30 days, can the inspector walk out to the property, take a look, and knock out 85% of this list just by showing up? And, yep, we've got smoke detectors, yep, this door is taken care, yep. All the things that have been represented to us. Because theoretically, if he comes back in 30 days and says to us, I walked out, I took a look, and these things weren't done, that's pretty, that's pretty damning. But if those things are done, and you lay eyes on him, looks like we're on the right path, especially if we can look in our permitting process and say, yep, permit is on its way through the system, the system's doing its thing.
What, what happens, to your point, what happens if within the 30-day period of time, let's say this body does not uphold the appeal. But within the 30-day period of time, they remedy all of these items. What is the effect to the, to the applicant if they've remedied everything? There's no enforcement that follows, I assume. Is that correct?
On my end, there wouldn't be. It'd be determined on the, what the city attorney decides they wanna, they wanna just also stop the enforcement on their end.
So I guess my, it leads to my question of how we act. Because if we proceed and deny the appeal, every opportunity is still in place for correction of this in a forthright manner, which has been represented as is nearly done anyway. So I'm trying to see if there's any downside to the applicant if we follow that process.
So I wonder if there's one downside, and that downside is additional cost. So if they have to file a second, you know, appeal or whatever, is the applicant incurring additional cost versus if we just postpone? The pop filter is not stunning on this microphone. If we postpone this hearing for 30 days, do they not incur additional cost? Because I wanna be sensitive to the additional cost function of this, of this conversation, which we really haven't brought up, but is, is here in the letter.
That's a valid point. Now, let's assume that the applicant is sincerely wanting to remedy the issues. They would not have to file appeal in that case to City Council, and they would not have to incur additional costs. So that remedy, that could be remedied as well by the applicant if they say, no, we're gonna fix this. We're gonna knock it out, we're gonna get it done. We're not gonna need to appeal to City Council, we're not gonna need to spend more money, we're done. We're just gonna fix it. That would be within the control of the applicant, correct? I assume. They would not need to spend the money. Does that remedy the potential downside that you see to the applicant?
I think so.
Well, I mean, we're talking about a water heater permit, what, 150 bucks? Talking about a door permit, maybe 200 bucks. We're talking about a demo permit, maybe 300 bucks. So there's not a whole lot of, I mean, that should be over-the-counter stuff. It is pretty much everywhere. I'm not sure how Escondido does it, but over-the-counter to get a water heater, right?
I, I think it's not a question of the permit cost, I think it's a question of the...
Timing.
Well, the appeal cost, which I assume, which I read was multiple thousands of dollars.
But they, but first, they would have to remedy. Otherwise, they would have to file the appeal.
Look, I, I, I think, I think we all wanna accomplish the same thing. We wanna remedy this. But we have, we have to stop the impasse. It's, it's gotta stop. Because the only other alternative is we continue on to City Council. Because I can tell you, just by listening to my fellow county commissioners, we're, we're on the side of supporting staff's recommendation right now. And what's your other remedy? Well, I guess you could just take, take that and, and you know, you're still under violation, and nothing gets resolved, and you go off to City Council. I can, you know, City Council's gonna have the same discussion here. It'll be, it'll be the same thing. You guys gotta fix this. That's just the way it is. It's the code, it's the law. How do you do it? You meet with city staff, and you come to an agreement. And you do it in a cordial way, like professionals that we all are, and we get this done. That, that's, that is the course. We here right now, we're, we're vacillating on going, no, we're gonna agree with city staff and deny the appeal, and then you have to continue down this pathway of, of no resolution. Or, we're gonna give you 30 days to sit down with city staff and see if you guys can truly, truly, as, as we've been told by the applicant, we wanna get this done. Staff wants to get it done, they're, I'm sure they don't wanna be pursuing this any longer. We wanna get this all done. From what I'm hearing, it's possible.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think it needs to be done, too, in 30 days.
However, if, if there is not adequate, and that is a very subjective term, but that's up to us. If there is not adequate process by the time it comes back here in 30 days, we kinda have no choice. We hear the answer.
Yeah.
And, and the answer is...
Should be very doable in 30 days.
We're gonna deny the appeal. And that's just the hard truth. So we hear everything that's been said by the applicant, we've heard everything that's been said by staff, as far as questions we've asked. You know, I, I think we're pretty close to having a motion made. But I still want to make sure that we have completed this process because that is what the applicant, quite frankly, paid for.
I have one other, and maybe this is gonna take us down a rabbit hole, and so if it does, you can just drag me out and shoot me.
No.
But Mr. Sandoval's integrity has been impugned in this. And it is my opinion that he should not be the, the city inspector subject to this inspection. I don't feel like he should be made to go out to the property. And I don't know if we have the power to request this, but I would just say, let's get, let's get another city inspector whose integrity has not been impugned so that he doesn't have to confront this situation. This, this case comes off of his desk. He's done a great job. And I think this may also help alleviate some of the tension with Mr. Zylar because we've got another inspect, another code compliance officer who has come out.
That's, that's a good point. Does, is there another code compliance officer for the city of Escondido?
Yes.
Okay. I think that on Barry's point to the minutes going forward, we need to be extremely specific with our testimony tonight and our, what we confer on about if we're going to extend this for 30 days. Exactly what the parameters are, and we need to be very specific about those so that there's no question in 30 days when it comes back, it's either a done deal or it's a...
Yeah, that we would put that, we would put that specific information with, we request that staff place that on the...
That way the City Council will...
Packet.
Yeah.
So they'd have that prior to if we choose to deny the appeal.
Right.
However, I would suggest that, I think that we have, we're all in a, probably in agreement is my guess on, on, on what we're looking for. I would just suggest that I've tried to put forth, I don't see a reason why denying the appeal would not grant that as well. I don't know that we need to put a specific and custom mechanism in place because as, as I was, as I think it through, that's already there. We've talked about the very soonest, should they go out and file an appeal of our decision tonight, the very soonest would be 30 days.
Well, wait a minute, I was under the impression it was 17 days.
17.
10 plus 17.
Okay.
Hold on. The appeal needs to be made within 10 days of our decision.
10 days plus another...
And then it's scheduling it for City Council.
Right, which, the earliest would be 17 days. So if they did it tomorrow, you're talking 18 days. I don't think it's enough time.
Well, that's the best-case scenario. However, if they are in that process, I still think it's within the applicant's control to remedy the situation and not have the need for City Council to intervene. If they've remedied the situation, or they're substantially in that remedy while they go to City Council, that, that would, that would be within the applicant's control. I'm not sure that us providing an additional layer...
Why don't we ask the question of staff if it is within the applicant's control as far as timely inspections and everything else? That they gotta go through.
Let's do that. I think that's a good idea, however...
Because we're talking about two, two people here. We're talking about the...
And let's define what that is before we ask the question because Commissioner Stevie, I think, brought up a great point. And as we nail down the tricky part of this, you know, in going out and inspecting to see if the non-conformities are done is, is, that's a day, done. The tricky part is submitting for a permit. But as I'm hearing this, we're talking about a permit for a door and a water heater? That's not a timely, I mean, that's not a time-consuming submission at all. So I, I would suggest that we incorporate what we think that whole process would be. I, I just don't see it as time-consuming.
Yeah, I think the reason why I am, so I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
It feels like you're saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're, we're over-complicating the process, we could just simply deny the appeal. The reason why I'm inclined to Chair Wyler's sort of 30-day, continue the hearing is because I would like for Mr. Zylar to be able to have the opportunity to not have to decide about whether to spend money on appeal, to just focus on getting the city inspector out, getting this thing taken care of, and coming back. I feel like 30 days, just with the pace of everything through no one's fault, is, is a more reasonable time than, than 17. Really, it's 10 because you have to make a financial decision within 10 days. And, you know, you'd think, oh, this should be a pretty easy decision. But there's an element to this whole conversation of a loss of faith and goodwill between Mr. Zylar and the city. And so, you know, as he's wrestling with this decision of whether or not he should appeal, there's a question of like, who are they gonna send out? And is that person gonna have a vendetta against me? And there's this narrative in place. And so I feel like what we're doing by following Chair Wyler's high-level recommendation is just kind of trying to give everyone some room to breathe and trying to show some good faith on the city's part and giving them time to focus on one thing, which is getting the inspector out, not two things. Should we appeal and get an inspector out?
I would, I would just like to add, with all due respect to Commissioner Spear, I've applied for simple permits that should've been over the counter and had them take weeks. So there is no rhyme or reason. Depends on their volume of work and everything else, so...
Yeah, I, let me interject real quick. I, I don't, I do not think that everything's gonna be resolved in 30 days. I'm, I'm very much a realist to understand there's a process, and there's a lot of things that need to be taken care of that 30 days is not gonna be it. What I wanna see in 30 days is that there is cooperation and a desire, and it's a clear desire to follow the, the proper process to get this all taken care of. And I get it, you know what? You, you gotta put plans together, you gotta get the documentation in, you gotta get potentially an architect involved or whomever to get whatever needs to be done, to get it in, and then there's a review process. But what it shows, it shows that now there is a sense of cooperation by the applicant to work with the city to get it done. That's what I'm after. And, and, and that's what we have to see in 30 days, is my feeling. It has, it has to be that there is, now, the, the ball's being moved forward.
So if I could play the devil's advocate, okay? Mr. Zylar goes in and he applies for a water heater permit and comes back in 30 days, and we say, what'd you do? And he said, I applied for a permit for a water heater. Is that gonna be sufficient for you?
It may not. That's up, that's up to code enforcement that says, okay, we have, and I'm just throwing out a random number. We got 12 items that need to be taken care of, and we got one done. Okay. However, I was able to get one done, and we have a plan in place that we've all agreed upon in order to get the remaining 11 done. And here's our timeframe. And we, and we are all confident that based on, on, on staff's experience, and how long it takes to get permits, and so on and so forth, that there is now a sense of cooperation that this will get resolved in a timely manner. And, and this appeal, and this appeal kinda just hangs on for a moment until we can figure a way what to do with the appeal at that point. Because that, that's the part I haven't quite figured out in, in my thinking out loud is, okay, we delayed this 30 days, okay, all of a sudden there is a sense of cooperation. Now what do we do with the appeal? Things are getting resolved. And, you know, at that point, do we just continue it again? And continue it to a point, everything got resolved, therefore, the appeal, the issue of the, that the appeal is based upon goes away. And I know I'm not explaining that as well as I should, but we still have this before us. We have this appeal before us.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, I certainly do. But I don't think, I'm, I'm afraid, I mean, this has dragged on for a long time. We just don't wanna get into that same position again.
Exactly.
So we need to make a make it or break it date.
And, and as, I agree with that, and what I'm thinking is this. If I'm the, if I'm in the position of the applicant, and I decide tonight, you know what? I'm done. I'm gonna comply. I'm gonna make this happen. I'm not even gonna file an appeal to City Council. I'm just gonna get it done. Because the, the, what I got tonight was a denial. So I'm just gonna do it. What's the downside to me? Nothing. I don't file an appeal. I don't file an appeal. I don't know what enforcement mechanism kicks in because of our denial tonight, if that were the case. And I were to decide just to comply. I don't know how that would be detrimental to me if I don't file an appeal and I just choose to get it done.
Or, or, or choose to continue the pathway of not compliance.
Right, if I choose to continue...
Now it's like, all right. What, what's the continue enforcement? It's the continue, the continuing, go out there, you're still in violation, you're still in violation. There's a step beyond the appeals. Appeal here, your, your appeal gets denied. You go to City Council, let us say, the appeal gets denied by City Council. The, the issue hasn't been resolved. What's the next step? And, and, you know, I'm kind of looking at Mr. Sandoval to, to answer that question, but maybe that's that's something that, you know, I don't know. At, at that point, I guess it's, and maybe I need to open up the public testimony again so we can answer the question from, by Mr. Sandoval, what happens then? Appeal or no appeal, it doesn't, it doesn't get resolved. You know, I'm hearing from the applicant, there's a desire to get this resolved.
And that's...
Because I, I'm assuming that if it continues to go down this pathway and nothing gets done, and we go through the appeal process, and, and, and still nothing is getting done, then there's probably fines assessed, and it may be assessed on the piece of property as a lien or whatever mechanism is there so that it becomes difficult then to get, get loans or sell the property until the lien's taken care of. I don't know.
That's where I'm seeing that if there's a contrite desire to comply, I think every opportunity already exists. opportunity already exists to do that. And wasn't, for clarification, wasn't one of your questions, Commissioner Spear, that if we denied the appeal and they chose not to appeal, then what's the process that proceeds regarding our enforcing this? Is that a question you can?
Do we now procedurally have to just open up the public testimony again in order to ask questions to staff?
Do you have the answer?
Yeah.
Um, yes, actually. Yeah, if you wanna ask questions to staff.
Okay. I, I think, I think it's important and, and, you know, we've been here a long time discussing this, but I think we're trying to find a solution for everybody. So that's the purpose. But I would like to open up the public testimony again so that we can get an answer from staff that, okay, we, we do everything that we can here as, as an approving body and they're still not compliant, you know, what, what happens then? Is that what you were trying to ask?
My question is, and I think it's our question, correct me if I'm misinterpreting you, my question is, if we deny the appeal, I'm not asking what the process is for the applicant, or I'm sorry, the appellant, to appeal our decision, what is your process in enforcing our, the further action?
Yes, he opened it.
Okay. It could be continued enforcement on my end in fines and also it would be referred to the city attorney to make a decision on how they would like to move forward.
So theoretically, which is again what I thought you were trying to allude to, then there would be a reasonable amount of time during that for them to hustle and try to get everything corrected for us and then perhaps they could approach the city and say, we've already done it, that you don't need to go any further. And perhaps the city then could discontinue legal proceedings. Would that be correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. So there is a process of enforcement post-denial that does provide a mechanism of patience and in, in the light of cooperation, is what it sounds like. That is, was a question I had, so thank you. And, and I guess that, to me, that, that satisfies every direction because this body is appropriate in saying, hey, let's, let's help get this done and be mindful of the applicant, if the applicant is cooperative and wanting to get it done. It also says, let's not delay a way-long process of enforcement if the applicant is not intent on simply complying. So I think it covers all of those bases that, that are appropriately considered.
I'm sure that what we decide today, if we did decide to give him some additional time, that would trigger, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. I'm tired.
Trigger, trigger positive action from the appellant? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
See, now I've helped two of you.
Thank you, David.
Do we have the ability to deny the appeal but vacate the $2,000 fine?
Um.
Whatever that sum is, it's not.
Are you talking about the appeal fee?
Yes.
Um, I don't believe so because that is an appeal fee that's set by a resolution that was passed by the city council.
Yeah.
All right, I, you know, we're going around and around, which is good. It's a, it's good discussion. I, I'd like to hear a motion from, from somebody and, and then let, let's, let's see where this goes.
I quite simply believe that the opportunity still exists, so I'd like to make a motion to deny the appeal.
Second.
Sorry, just for clarification of the motion, are you also moving to adopt the resolution that was provided by staff?
That is correct. Yes, thank you.
Discussion. Start down with Commissioner Stevie. And this kinda goes in line with our last planning commission hearing about, so anybody can, can listen to the audio and hear, you know, where we're coming from as far as the way we intend to vote.
Is, is there any path by which the $2,000 fine is not, they do not need to pay it, the appeal fee?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Um, not that I'm aware of, that appeal fee has been paid already and that was required when the appellant filed the appeal. Um, it's an, it's a fee that is set by the city council in a resolution. I'm not aware of any way that that could be waived. It's not something I've looked at or analyzed. I'm not aware of it as we sit here today.
Because I, by understand, the reason I'm locking onto it is that my understanding from Mr. Zeiler's attorney was that he's asking us to basically vacate that. So we can't honor that request in any way, even if we continue this hearing and ultimately it just goes away due to resolution.
My understanding of his request was that he, that, that the planning commission not hear the appeal based on his argument about the notice being insufficient. If the planning commission hadn't heard the appeal, that might be an issue.
I, okay, got it. Okay.
Um, I am, I'm not in favor of the motion because of the, the fee. And I just don't, I just don't feel like it would've been a better thing to do to give Mr. Zeiler a little bit more time to bring things into compliance. I know that you were looking for, you know, some things to be done within 30 days. I was looking for everything to be done in 30 days. And then he doesn't have the, you know, the appeal to the city council hanging over his head and associated costs and that.
Commissioner McCarron.
I think both options that we've been discussing provide ample opportunity to remedy the situation, but I also feel that I agree with Commissioner Jester on this. I think we should offer a time limit to remedy these, remedy these items.
I don't know if, if either of you two would like to add something. You guys made the motion and seconded it.
Yeah, I'd just be reiterating that.
Yeah.
My feelings on it. I, I think procedures have already been known to the property owner, the issues, the problems with his property have already been known, the ways to remedy it have always been known, the potential consequences always known. This can just keep getting kicked and kicked and kicked and kicked. And I'm sorry, and with respect to those who support continuing the item given here, I just see it still being kicked further down the road and I just wanna bring this to a head. So that is why I'm supporting Commissioner Spear's motion.
Okay. I wanna thank all the planning commissioners for all of their input on this. I think that we had a lot of good discussion. I'm of the opinion that, I'm disappointed that, quite frankly, that this had to get this far, for whatever reasons. What I'm, what I'm hearing tonight, and, and I feel that there's some sincerity from the applicant that they wish to get this resolved. And so, you know, I think that at least at this point, I'll not support the motion. I think that we should give the applicant, and it's a set period of time, and to come back and, or postpone this decision for two meetings so it wouldn't come back the next meeting, but the following. And, and let's see where this falls. I, I would like to see that and I, and I think it can be done, so I'm, I'm not gonna support the motion. Any other discussion?
Oh, I would call for the vote.
If, if we could, let's call for the vote.
Vote will be open for an approval of Resolution 2025-05, denying the appeal. Chair Wyler?
No. Sorry.
Um, no, no thing on digital will be built available. Uh, Vice Chair Barber?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarron?
No.
Commissioner Jester?
No.
No.
Um, Commissioner Spear?
Yes.
And Commissioner Stevie?
I'm sorry. I need, I need clarification. So what, sorry, but if I vote no, do we have, does Chair Wyler have an opportunity to make a motion? Or is this done?
No, the motion fails. So a new motion can be made.
Okay, great. No.
I thought we had a vote.
Apparently not.
The vote is two for to deny the motion on stand.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna make a new motion. And you know what? I really appreciate what you guys are saying because this has been a long process and, and we've been here a long time discussing this. I get a sense, again, that, that the applicant wishes to get this resolved. So I'm gonna make a motion that we, and maybe help me with the proper wording, but we do not make a decision on this.
You would continue the, if you're gonna continue.
Thank you. That was the word I was looking for. That we continue this hearing for not the next scheduled hearing, but the following one. And, and that we just continue the hearing. As a part of that, that would be my motion. What I expect from staff and the applicant, you guys get together, get this resolved. Otherwise, you see where it's gonna go. So, and, and then report back to us when this gets rescheduled. But my, my motion is to go ahead and, and continue this item. Second to motion. So, yeah, we have a motion by chair, we have a second by Commissioner Jester. Any discussion?
Yes. So when it returns to us in approximately 30 days, what are we looking for? I mean, are we gonna see some kind of measurement of progress and then, or are we gonna see it's a done deal?
Has to be done.
Could that be made specific in the motion? If you do, I'll support it.
Okay.
If the motion is to continue the hearing, I'm not sure how you, well, I'll let you, I'll let you figure out if you.
Well, you're the attorney.
At this point, I'm not gonna change my motion. I, I think we continue it for two meetings and we hear what, what progress has been made and then we make a, a decision at that meeting.
I like it.
So that, that's clarification on, on my, so I'm not gonna change the, the motion. And I respect exactly what you're saying, I get it, but my motion is to continue the meeting until whatever the date is of the, not the next meeting, but the following meeting, whatever dates those fall under. That's my motion. That is what you understood, Commissioner Jester?
Yes.
So your second still stands? Okay. Any further discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
To provide information, the second scheduled planning commission meeting after this one, the next scheduled meeting will be April 22nd and the next scheduled meeting will be May 13th. And that will be the date.
Right, okay. So that would be the date included in the motion then?
Okay.
And for full context, the motion at hand is from Chair Wyler to postpone or continue this item to the May 13th, 2025 planning commission meeting.
Correct.
Okay. For the vote, Chair Wyler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barber?
No.
Commissioner McCarron?
Yes.
Commissioner Jester?
Yes.
Commissioner Spear?
No.
And Commissioner Stevie?
Yes.
The vote for the motion is four two to continue the item to the May 13th commission meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. So that ends this item. I just wanna emphasize to the, to the applicant, it's a gift, use it well and good luck. At this point, if we can take it just a brief recess back in five minutes, we've got a couple more items to get completed before 10 o'clock.
Just wanna say thank you all. Appreciate it.
All right. Good luck.
I think it was, the time for me was Sandoval's remark, the, the goal is compliance. Okay, well then, let's comply.
And I honestly agree with him. And I know his reputation. Sabrina, I was telling you about the example that knows it. He said, you know, it's a shift.
You did great, though. Reading control.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for all you did.
Yeah, thank you.
Really good.
Everyone's comments.
You all liked my idea.
Did you also notice, like, sorry, I was checking because I was not aware that you could have an 80-foot, 30 units. I looked at the proposed floor plan, went through the home, we lost our hands through. We have a bathroom and living room and, you know, a bathroom with each of the bedrooms. So the intent is very clear that these are not gonna be used as a two-bedroom in you. It's definitely 12 units. I mean, the intent is clear. And they have a kitchen.
Except for they have doors of those.
Yeah, they have kitchen, they have a sink with each of the bedrooms. I never put sinks in my bedrooms. Yes, so the intent was very clear. It's, they have a countertop and a, and a small 12-inch sink. So it could be like, that was the only part, because you're not coming in a bedroom that's outside of the bathroom. So it's clear. But they did it. And so that to me was like, you guys asked for it. Yeah. They approved it. That was literally the standards on that shit.
There's some.
I don't wanna yell at you, I have a problem. There's some kind of.
So.
Multiple.
Yeah.
Small.
He's the guy.
I don't want to yell at him. I have nothing.
All right, we got to get going, because I got to break this bread to get to.
Don't tell me I'm the likes.
The only thing is prolonged is your damn report.
I don't want to tell you.
Okay, I'll tell you.
Can we get to do this? I don't think I have to worry about that, so we can go.
Oh, we're missing, yeah, we want to get this, we're like. I'm leaving at 4 o'clock. 4:00 AM. 4:00 AM.
Are you driving or driving?
Okay, we'll go ahead and bring this meeting back to order. Moving on to, and bear with me a second, item number three, which is the downtown specific plan retail corridor. We're going to get an update from our subcommittee.
Yes, thank you, Chair Wyler. I look forward to this three and a half hour presentation. Before you this evening is the objective and scope of work that we put together as the subcommittee. And the purpose of this document is to simply make sure that the entire planning commission is in alignment with the work we're intending to do. I want to add that I did have the opportunity to speak with both Mayor White and Councilman Garcia about this. Mayor White did actually see this document. And at a high level, these individuals were very excited about this subcommittee. They wanted me to relay that. And Mayor White felt like this document, like what we are intending to do and the value we would potentially be providing to city council on the work would be much appreciated. So with that, you can take a quick look. But at a super high level, we're looking to do three things. We're looking to engage the key stakeholders, which include local business owners, residents, community leaders, and city personnel to understand their perspectives. Then distill our conversations into some high-level findings and insights. Draw out some recurring themes that would really help us to kind of get our arms around what's happening on grand and where the opportunities and challenges are. And then finally, come before this commission with a findings and action plan that we would get the commission's perspective on, revisions on. And then ultimately, that would turn into a PowerPoint presentation or some sort of presentation before the city council that reflects a kind of whole of commission perspective. So that's it.
May I ask which Garcia?
Christian.
Thank you.
Terrific. I just want to really say thank you for the three of you committee members committing to this and spending the time to come up with this action plan, so to speak. I think it's really good, and I think we're moving in the right direction, so I want to thank you. Comments? Questions? Everybody's like, "No, we're not talking anymore." Okay, I'm sorry. You know what? Think, again, thank for the update. What is your next step? I'm sure it's getting out and talking to the stakeholders.
Yeah, so we've, I mean, in brief, we've put together a Google Drive where we're collaborating. We're putting together meeting logs so that we can, you know, keep each other aware of meetings. We're not intending to meet the whole of the subcommittee with each individual person. It'll probably be a lot of one-on-ones. And the way we're going to control the data is we're going to have a set, we're going to have a questionnaire that we're all operating from. Now, it doesn't, you know, we might deviate from that a little bit and ask our own kind of rabbit hole questions and stuff, but we've got this kind of core bit of data we're collecting. And if this commission would like, we can come to you with that questionnaire for whole commission approval before we go out and start engaging individuals. Or if you'd like us to just decide on the questionnaire between the three of us and go from there, we can do that as well.
You know what? I'm confident that you guys can come up with what's necessary to get out. When do you suspect that you would come back to us to kind of give us the next update? And I'm not holding you to it. It's just I'm curious. And then it can be set as an agenda item at the appropriate time.
We haven't discussed a timeline internally.
Okay. No, that's all right. I was just curious. Any questions, comments? All right, thank you. Appreciate it, you guys. Moving on to the next item, we've got future agenda items. Anything that the planning commission wishes to bring forth in a future meeting? Seeing none? No oral communications?
None further received, no.
Doesn't look like it. Selection of chair and vice chair. I put a lot of thought into this, and I think what I would like to do is make a motion on this that we postpone the selection of the chair and vice chair until we have a full commission. I think it's appropriate that Mr. Correll is in attendance and that we have our full commission here. These are two important positions.
I would second that motion.
We have a motion by the chair, a second by Commissioner Stevie. Any discussion? All right, if we can get the vote.
Sorry. A vote would be to postpone this to the next meeting? Do we need to vote for this?
It would be to, I'm sorry, I should have been, I should have clarified. To postpone this until we are sure we have a, all commissioners here in attendance to make that determinate, or to have that vote.
Okay, certainly. Then the vote would be, oh, sorry. Chair Wyler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barber?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarron?
Yes.
Commissioner Jester?
Yes.
Commissioner Spear?
Yes.
And Commissioner Stevie?
Yes.
The vote is six, zero, to postpone the selection of vice chair and vice chair.
Terrific. Planning commissioners report. Anybody have anything to report? I think we got a good report from our subcommittee. City planners report tentative future agenda.
Sorry about that. There's a couple items to report on. We do have a private development project, which is going to be on its way. This is going to consist of a residential subdivision, density bonus, and CUP modification for a religious facility. This should be coming your way within the next two to three months. So just as a heads up, let you know what's in the pipelines at the moment. We also have some policy work that's being done, which is housing element implementation ordinances. One of those is the ministerial and by right ordinance, and that's creating a minor plot plan, which is going to allow for us to do ministerial review and have an actual review, or, yeah, review mechanism as part of our entitlements. We're going to have a permanent supportive housing ordinance update, ADU ordinance comprehensive update as well. There's going to be a climate action plan annual progress report that'll be coming soon, and a general plan annual progress report as well. We do also have some informational presentations, which will be coming. A general plan amendment for safety and community health and services. A sequel presentation, and a North County mall permit history, which will also be coming your way soon. And that's it. I am not the city planner. I am Principal Planner Oscar Romero. Even though it says Veronica Marone is there, that is not me.
You know what? Thank you for attending in the city planner's stead.
No problem.
Yep. Any questions?
Just, you may not know the answer to this, but you mentioned within the housing element to discuss the ministerial by right ordinance. Do we have any indication of when that might be?
So we are working on that. We're finalizing. So I would expect it same within that three, it's a six-month period.
All right. I think that's it. Unless anybody's got any other comments, this meeting is adjourned.